I hear my call to order this meeting on the district board's school board. This is a school board.
Here.
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Study what you can see this and what you can't.
I proudly testify that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda tonight is our communication with both schools. Study.
Well, good evening. On behalf of Washington School, I'd like to welcome Board of Education, senior leadership team, and the community to our school. I am so proud to be principal at Washington School, and we haven't hosted a meeting for quite some time, and we're really excited for you to be here today. I would just like to take this opportunity, since tomorrow is School Board Members' Day, to acknowledge and thank the school board. At your place, you have a bag of cards. Those were made by some second graders. Second grade social studies includes learning about their community and learning about government. So last week, I visited each second grade class and taught them a little bit about the school board. And in their notes, too, you'll see what some of their takeaways were about what a school board member does. We hope you enjoy the cards, and we sincerely thank you for all of the work that you do for our community and for our students. At this time, I'd like to thank the Washington PTA. Present tonight from our executive board is Mrs. Mary Moore. Would you wave, Mary? She is one of our vice presidents. She provided the treats tonight, which is a very important role. But more importantly, our PTA does so much all year long to support the work that we do, funding field trips and a lot of enrichment activities for our students. And last year, they took on something very special. They set a goal to fundraise for our library furniture to support a redesign of our library space. Be happy to take any of the board members down after the meeting tonight if you'd like to see it. I know a few of you already have. We want to thank the district and the Board of Education for the work that the district did this summer, new flooring, a paint job, new ceiling tiles. And then we were able to add, next to the PTA, about $40,000 worth of new furniture, new collaboration tables and chairs, soft seating, and mobile shelving. And because of that flexibility of the furniture, we're able to change the floor plan up depending on the activity. I commented at our staff meeting this morning, I love how every time I come in, I'm not quite sure what the setup is going to be. And that's the way it should be. It should be flexible. Finally, I would like to recognize an extremely hardworking, dedicated Washington staff. Quite a few of them are here tonight if they could stand. It's a privilege to stand here tonight and represent the wonderful work that happens in this school every day, thanks to our staff. Thank you very much. When choosing one aspect to highlight tonight of all the work that we do here, I landed on a Division 2022 component, evaluate future communication trends and develop curriculum around writing, speaking, digital citizenship, and use of technology for message production. That is a district focus, and it's something that we really believe is important here at Washington, all of those communication skills. Last year, we had a really targeted focus on our writing instruction. We had a subgroup of our instructional team, which included teachers Kristin Wysite, Ellen Melander, Jen Harris, Jenny Coover, Megan Mercard, Krista Lipnisky, Angela Shepherd, and Amy DeBarr. Spent a lot of hours writing writing guides that were based on our district grade level expectations of writing, also the core curriculum standards, and we used a lot of different resources. Matt Jewell, the district curriculum coordinator, came to every single one of our meetings to support that effort. And then they worked with, those teammates went out to their PLCs and then developed writing assignments, rubrics, student-friendly checklists. And as I walk through classrooms, I'll fall, I can see that, all of that work implemented and what the students are doing. We're continuing that work this year by working on upcoming vocabulary and by collecting anchor papers that will serve as manuals for the students. At the same time, the staff are creating a lot of opportunities for students to have choice and use their voice and write for real old audiences. Our students all have opportunities to use a variety of tech tools, including video production and creating their messages. When we bring writing and a fit learning environment together to give students the chance to share their ideas in a variety of ways, you're going to see a few highlighted in our video that our library director, JJ Bad, did for us. And again, it's just a small representation of all the learning that happens here, but the kids are very excited to share what they're doing with writing and message production.
In kindergarten, we lay the foundation for our future learning. One of the things we'd like to do is give the children opportunities to work on their writing and speaking. With their speaking, we want them to do more than just one-word answers. We want them to be able to answer in full sentences. So one of the opportunities that we give them is we did a project in science, working chatter picks, where they're able to give the information that they learned to an authentic audience of their classmates.
I need food and water to survive.
I need a hump to my food.
I'm a predator.
I need food and water to survive.
I need a hump to my food.
I'm a predator.
A walrus has two long tusks and four flippers. Walruses are mammals. They can be eight to 12 feet long.
We created a monster and an emotion for it. Then we wrote about it.
We used the emotion ball for help to get juicier words in our sentences.
First, we started with a boring word. Then we brainstormed better words for a narrative story.
This is our writing checklist, and we use it if we forget to put something in our sentence. And this, right here, we highlight it so we know if we want to put an emotion in our sentence or not.
Behind me is our emotion wall, where we use it for help to put juicier words in our sentences.
It took a lot of steps before we could publish our writing.
It was so satisfying when we put our methods in the hallway for everybody to see.
In second grade, we used our organizer to help us complete our back papers.
We used our infant information. First, we read a nonfiction book about facts. Then we brainstormed. Then we did our organizer. Then we did a sloppy copy, and we revised, checked, and we did our final copy, and then we evaluated.
My eyes are so good at seeing flashlights.
I use sight words and now photo patterns to spell words correctly.
We used our writing checklist to collaborate with our friends and Mrs. Coover to make our writing even better.
I put all my facts on a graphic organizer. This is my rough draft, and here's my final project.
In third grade, we created a project of book talk scripts based on our favorite book from this year.
We created book talk scripts, too, and we collaborated with authors to revise our scripts.
Who is the toughest guy you know? Who is the coolest? You should read the book, John Cena, Pro Wrestler, Superstar, by Daniel B. In this book, there is lots of cool information on John Cena. Did you know that John Cena won 16 world championships, only one of his first?
Before we could publish our newsletter, we had to gather information, and before that, we had to brainstorm our idea. Then we had to, we used our editing checklist Mrs. Lipnisky gave us. We edited with our partner. Then we had three peers edit it for us.
Of course, we have to make it look good for an audience, so we started tinkering with different fonts and colors to make it jazzed up a little bit. Mariah, anything you want to add?
Then we had to publish our newsletter so everyone else could read it.
We all had to follow the same process. It didn't matter if we were writing, or interviewing someone, or publishing a video. We all had to do publishing the same way.
Everybody got their topics from experiences around the room or from other places in the school.
One of the last things we have to do is we have Mrs. Lipnisky edit our things so then we'll be able to publish it online.
Hi there. I'm Krista Lipnisky. I teach fourth grade here at Washington. I wanted a way to creatively motivate my students with their writing, and by far, this Google site newsletter has exceeded my expectations. The students are working hard to collaborate and create amazing things. In this month's newsletter, we had graphs, we had interviews, and we had just a lot of fun doing it, too.
In fifth grade, while we write in our academic vocabulary toolkit, we get to go up in the front of the classroom and speak to our classmates and teachers. That helps us improve our speech and help us speak to more than one person.
Academic vocabulary toolkit also helps us in other subjects like social studies, science, and writing, because when we're doing tests or writing essays, it helps us look back on different sentences and improve. I have an example from writing where there's different sentences that I looked back on, and you can see the different words that I've, I changed and made better.
Education's changing. Instead of just learning simple facts, we're learning how to collaborate, write, listen, speak in front of other people, and work within groups. These are all things that will help us later in life.
Each one of the board members gets three schools as their adaptive schools. Washington is my adaptive, one of my three adaptive schools. And I came here on Monday for the Veterans Day. I found your, your staff did a wonderful job organizing it. The PTA did a great job. It was a wonderful event, and thank you for hosting.
Thank you.
Board members, are there any modifications to the agenda? Any board member would like to? Hearing on, we're moving on to recognition and achievements. Dr. Shuler?
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Definitely know the school's being cleaned for tomorrow's block, so it's good. It's good. I actually want to invite him, I'm going to put him on the spot a little bit because I didn't talk to Mr. Claypool about this beforehand, but would you mind coming up to the podium and kind of helping me with this recognition? As I know, the opportunity to recognize state champions is something that's really, really special, certainly for a high school principal, and so I'm hoping maybe you can help with introducing our coaches.
I hate the opportunity to brag about our kids. I want to first start off with two young women who represented us extremely well in the IHSA State Girls Tennis Tournament. Sam and Emily, if you guys would step up with Coach, with Coach Klausing, if you guys would step forward, please. These two young women, to say that they made their way through the state tournament easily, now, they wouldn't say it was easy, I'm sure, but as someone on the outside looking in and looking at their scores, they made their way through a state championship about as easily as two young women could. And I can tell you this, that they represent our school in so many ways that go way beyond, and you're going to hear me say it about the young men here in a minute, they go way beyond tennis. And their coach, Patty Klausing, some of you know Patty, what Patty means to our school, and I know these two young women would say the same thing, he is much more than a coach. And so they, along with the young men, I'm going to introduce to you here in a minute, represent the best of who we are. So Coach Klausing, I'll turn it over to you if you want to say a couple of words. Turn it over to you right now.
Thank you so much for having us here today. When I told the girls we were going to come before the school board, they said, wow, this is going to be an honor to be here. So we appreciate being here today. And I want to thank Claypool, too, and Mike Healy, also because they come and support these girls. Sometimes you think tennis, not a lot of players, a lot, I shouldn't say players, people watching, spectators, thank you. And so I just appreciate them not just being there on our senior night, but watching them all through the tournaments. And these two, our theme this year on the back of our shirts was Live to Give. And I think these two, like tennis and like any sport, they worked year-round for that, and we get the glory of the two months that they're on our tennis team. So what they, what they gave to our program, their ability level, and to watch them go through a tournament, one time, I will say, one thing that I remember them saying to each other right before, I think it was a semifinal match, they looked at each other like, one of them admitted, well, I'm nervous, and the other one goes, I am too. And so you could hear it in their voices. But they cruised through the tournament, so that was just super exciting. And they kind of made a name for themselves because we didn't get a lot of respect at the seeding meeting. And so one time, they knocked off New Trier, and they knocked off Hinsdale Central, and then they knocked off the number one seed, and won the finals, I believe it was 6061 in the final match. And I'm going to let, I want Mark Evans, Sam, and Troy, want to say a few words also. So thank you again so much.
Good evening. I'm Samantha Troy, and my partner is Emily Orlov. I would like to thank you for your time tonight and for representing us. I would like to say that throughout the four years of playing varsity tennis, every state has been different. And I would like to say that this year, in an overall sense, it was easy. But I'm very proud and very happy that I could end my last year playing varsity tennis this way, and also with an old friend of mine. I would also like to thank Coach Catty. She really is no ordinary coach to me or any of the other teammates. She really is an influence who has raised me and has helped me over so many issues in my life, and I will forever be in debt of her. And she will forever be an influence who I will look up to. I would also like to thank the school for letting me and my partner represent, and Mr. Claypool, Mr. Healy, for their support as well. And it's just been a really, a really, really big honor to be able to stand for you here tonight. So thank you.
When we have a team have success at the IHSA level that warrants a trophy, whether it's speech, or football, or in this case, boys track, we have, we have an assembly, and we had our assembly to honor the young men here about to meet. Before that, I was just curious, because this is the first boys' state championship we've had. And so we drove, I drove down Tiger Trail, literally prior to the assembly, just an hour or so before, and counted the number of athletics state championships we have, because that's what those little signs along, you know, the outside of our building indicate. And we had, we had 23, and this is our first. And at the assembly, what I tried to tell our student body is that there are thousands, let that sink in, thousands of high schools in America that don't have one. And so when we have assemblies at our school that disrupt the school day, which can be a burden, no doubt about it, I want to remind everyone just how, how special it is, because at, at our school, it almost seems commonplace. And I don't ever want to shortchange our kids and what they accomplish. This group of young men and their coaching staff with them, as I said a minute ago, because Emily and Sam could fit right in, I don't think they could run as far or as fast, they could sure as heck hit a tennis ball, they represent the best of who we are. And the fact that our boys have had their first state championship, to hang their skins, if you will, on the wall for the first time on behalf of our school, speaks a lot. And I wish all of you could know them, and I wish you could know their coaches, because they are remarkable young and not-so-young men. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce our, our boys' cross-country coach. Gentlemen, if you'd come forward, please. And to speak on behalf of our team, the head coach, Chris Coons. Thank you. Thanks for having us tonight, honoring these, these kids and the special, special job they did. I assume that Mr. Claypool was talking about the not-so-young. Oh, you and me. Okay, okay. We've had an incredible season. I'd like to introduce Craig, Dr. Craig Lawrence. He's, he's, his title is assistant coach, but in my mind, he is a co-head coach, because we do, it's a great team, we work together. So I always look at Craig as a co-head coach. We just had a great year. The boys have done a great job. They had an undefeated season this year. We had some really impressive wins throughout the year. It was culminated by the first ever Duquesne Conference Championship. They went out and won the regional, they won the sectional, and they won the state meet by 40 points. As Mr. Claypool said, it was our first state championship in boys' cross-country ever. Last year, we were third. Two years ago, we were eighth. Last year, we were third. This year, we were state champions. And the kids set incredible goals. You know, they have high expectations. These kids started, these and everybody else on our team, they actually started running like the second week of June is, is when they started summer camp. So, and it's continued on. We have a saying in, in Wheaton-Warnville South Cross-Country that's called "All In." And if you look at us, we have these orange bands that say "All In," because it's, it stands for what they are, what they do, we're all in. They make huge sacrifices throughout the years, and it's, it's something that goes on pretty much year-on-year. So they have just done an incredible, outstanding job. I'd like to, again, thank Dr. or Mr. Claypool, Mr. Healy. I'd like to thank Dr. Shuler. Dr. Shuler came down to Puria and, and shared in the excitement and the celebration at the state meet. I'd like to thank the entire Wheaton-Warnville community for all the support. The outpouring has just been incredible. I've been doing nothing but answering emails and texts. I mean, it's, it's crazy. So the support that we've gotten from the Wheaton-Warnville community is just incredible. I think what I'd like to do right now, real quick, is introduce, and I told Erica I'd keep it under a half hour, because I know you guys are busy. I just wanted, real quick, though, introduce our, our captains. We've got Sean Mason and Scott Mason, seniors, Matt Rice, where's Matt? Matt Rice over here is also a senior, and Jacob Cluckham, who's holding the trophy. They've just, they've been great leaders. Again, the entire team has been, it's been incredible journey. One more thing, this last weekend, they participated in the Nike National, the Midwest Regional National Qualifier in Terre Haute, Indiana, where they finished second. We actually, they lost by three points to the team that we beat by 40 last week in the state meet, but that's okay. You know, we have some adversity. We'll come back. So what that means, though, is they will continue on. The first week of the summer, they will compete in Portland, Oregon. Nike flies them out, puts them up, does the whole thing. It's, it's, it's all on Nike. And it's, it's a national meet. We've been rated as high as third in the nation so far this year, and it'll be a great opportunity for these kids to go out and to see where we stack up on the national scene. So they are truly beside the line. So thank you so much for your time. We've enjoyed it. Thank you.
Well, that was fun. We now move to public comments. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a question or comment on the agenda. The board appreciates hearing these stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district, and public input and a variety of opinions is very helpful. The board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process in the comments tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name, address your comments to the board. Please lift your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and curious and do not include statements that are personal or disrespectful, condescending to members of the board or staff. If your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat and present your comments to us online. And we have one speaker tonight, Mr. Greg Higgins.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you. Somebody you haven't seen last week, somebody I haven't seen in a long time. As you stated, I'm Greg Higgins, a member of the district. I'm a resident. As you stated, I'm Greg Higgins, a member of the district for about 18 years. I know you have an update on Jefferson coming up, so I won't try and ask too many questions in the studio's thunder. So I just had one question that I'm not sure if you have any data on, but to the extent you can give it to me tonight, I'd love to know for a future meeting or if you can post it. Do we have any idea how much taxpayer money was lost unfortunately due to the unfortunate and unnecessary loss of the Jefferson file to delay the Jefferson School Resolution, either through cost, legal expenses, increases to the bids that were given for it prior to the pre-planned demand.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. For the staff, you're welcome to stay for the entire meeting. It's going to be brickwork, being unsure, and all the support. If you have other things you'd like to do tonight, please feel free to leave. Thank you for coming. We now have a superintendent, Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Bronson. A couple of things that I just wanted to mention and share with the board tonight under my report. Number one, a huge thank you to the PTA Council, the number of board members who were able to join us this morning for an annual breakfast that the PTA Council puts together, where they bring together all of our representative PTA Council groups, our administrators, a number of district administrators and the board. I think we remind each other regularly, certainly at this meeting, how blessed we are as a school district to have such an amazing support network that sits behind our schools, but certainly this morning was a great reminder of that. I do also want to mention in your green folders that the PTA Council did put a membership form in there for you. So I would encourage board members, if you haven't officially joined a PTA, you are welcome to fill out a membership form. And the council, you can either designate a specific school that you want to join, if you want to join your adopted school PTA, welcome to. If not, if you fill out the membership form, the council will actually assign you to a school membership. But certainly, our goal is to have everybody be a member of a PTA. So just wanted to mention that that was in there. Number two, earlier this week, both on Monday and this week, and then we had a few last week, we had some incredible Veterans Day celebrations inside of our schools. I cannot tell you how many comments that I've had about the field of flags, both at Wheaton North and in front of Wheaton-Warnville South. Truly, I've had, I can't count how many comments that I've had from community members, many I've never met before, that have just said that was really an amazing visual to have as a reminder of that day. And so, again, just by way of reminder to the board, that was a specific decision that a board made a number of years back to have school on Veterans Day and really use that opportunity to educate our students and educate our community, and I think that continues to be a very wise decision when you see the opportunities that we have to not only educate, but engage our community, really some powerful learning experiences. Third thing I wanted to mention is that coming very soon, our Five Essentials survey window will open. So Five Essentials is the state's climate survey that now will be administered every year in the state of Illinois. Previously, it was every other year. The state has now moved that to an every-year activity that will take place. So Five Essentials is open to all staff members, instructional staff members to complete. All parents have an opportunity to complete that survey for their respective schools. And then, all students this year, student participation will begin at grade four. It used to be just middle and high school. Starting this year, grade four and up students will have an opportunity to complete Five Essentials survey. It is important to note, and part of why I wanted to mention it now and will continue to mention, is that in our respective school, you do need to have a 20% participation rate in order to get data, especially on the parent's side. So we will continue to push and share information around Five Essentials, but that survey window is open. I think it stays open for a little over a month. So I believe right after winter break is when that survey window will close. I wanted to just mention that certainly at last week's election, we're going to talk a little bit later in our agenda about Jefferson, which obviously was the subject of the referendum question for the district. But obviously, that election also brought to the district a number of new state officials that will represent District 200. I think we had quite a few positions turn over for elected positions that will represent some portion of District 200. Our board has historically, in the fall, done a breakfast for our state elected officials. We did not do that this fall. That was one we do kind of in conjunction with Districts 203 and 204. We specifically didn't do it this year, because we thought the opportunity perhaps of the fall election might be a bring-good opportunity here in the spring for us to convene that breakfast when we have an opportunity to meet a number of our new representative state senators that will represent us. So we are working on that, I think, to the target, if I remember correctly, is we're targeting like a February date, which will be kind of after their, so after veto session before the first session will kick up. And I anticipate that as we move through the first year, we're going to have a pretty busy legislative season. So I think it's a good opportunity for us to convene that breakfast with our partners in 203 and 204 and certainly make those introductions. Two more just really quick items. There has been, and I would anticipate coming up soon, there will continue to be some information written about a new component in the evidence-based funding formula. So not with the formula itself, but as the funding level for that formula was passed in this year's state budget, one of the things that was included in that was $50 million was allocated toward what's called a local property tax relief grant program. That was recently released by the state of Illinois, so the grant applications are over. And I just want to mention a couple of things in kind of how we've evaluated that opportunity, and then I guess let the board know what our recommendation would be, and you can certainly tell us if you disagree with the plan. So what the state did is that it built kind of a rank-order system for all school districts in the state of Illinois that basically go from number one on the list is the school district that has the highest property tax rate within the school district that is eligible for the most kind of grant reimbursement. So the state's idea through the property tax relief grant is to target communities that have kind of untenable property tax rates and try to provide an incentive for districts to basically swap out local property tax dollars with dollars that would come through the state grant program, with the idea that once those dollars were granted, then they would roll forward as a part of the district's base funding level for the following year. And so, every district is not only kind of ranked ordered on that list, but each district that has a local calculation of what percentage of reimbursement would be available. And so, the districts that are highest on that list actually have a reimbursement level very close to 99%. And really, what that means, important to understand, is that for every dollar that's abated, they're going to get 99 cents back in the straight state grant reimbursement. We are not very high on that list. I think of all the school districts, we are like number 450, something in the kind of the order. And our reimbursement rate is like 32%. So for every dollar we abated, we would get 32 cents back on that dollar through the grant program. So truly, in order to make that even be worth it in the long term, one, you'd have to have some comfort or assurance that that property tax grant program is going to be around for at least five years within the state level, and it wouldn't take that long to simply get back to the repayment level. So practically speaking, there are only $50 million in grants available. There's no chance that that $50 million is going to get down to number 450-something on the list. But I can't believe, even if it did, I don't see the board in a position to abate a dollar for a return of 32 cents. I just don't think that is an economic winner for the school district. And so, what I want to thank, Bill, we had to do a lot of quick work with a new program to really kind of fully understand that and all the nuance in it. But I'm not planning on recommending to the board that you pursue that option. The grant window is open until January. We have until January to apply, but unless there's a different incentive that comes out, I just don't see that as a viable option for us. And then finally, I just mentioned one thing. So Julie Ozenkowski does a lot of great data work for us in the school district. Gave me a little recap of election results and what we carried. Just two kind of interesting observations that I thought I'd share with the board. Number one, we have tracked historically not only the results, obviously in the last couple of referenda, but a number of precincts that it's carried. And so, obviously, the result indicated, I think, pretty significant support for the Jefferson project, but we also carried every precinct across the school district as well. So overall, support, I think, was positive, but geographically, it did pass or carry in every voting precinct across the district. And then the last thing that just was of interest. So board will remember, when we did the survey after the April 2017 referendum, we asked a lot of questions about, you know, kind of what didn't work, and then we also asked very specific questions about every project. So how do you feel? And to the question on the Early Learning Center, went back and pulled up that data, there were 28% of the respondents in that survey that responded by saying, remove that project completely from the plan. I don't support it. And then there were 72% of the respondents that responded somewhere in a continuum from keep it exactly as it is, revise it to reduce costs, or I'm still a little bit unsure, but looking for information. And if you look at that 72%, 28% distribution, that is exactly what the referendum vote was. So just, I think, kind of an interesting observation that Julie pointed out that I'm going to pass along to the board. That's all I've got.
Questions or comments from board members of Dr. Schuler? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Number one on the consent agenda is acceptance of gift Emerson Elementary School. Two, acceptance of gifts from Lincoln Elementary School PTA. Three, approval of change orders for 2018 summer construction projects. Four, approval of bills payable in April. Five, approval of minutes, October 10, 2018, October 12, 2018, special meeting with local officials, and October 24, 2018, committee of approval, and approval to destroy recordings closed sessions prior to June 2017 as law-abiding by law. Six, approval of personnel report to include employment, reservation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-직업人员. Are there any items board members want to move from the consent agenda? Hearing none, Dr. Schuler?
No additional information.
Are there any questions or comments from board members with respect to the consent agenda? Hearing none, I ask for a motion on the second to approve the consent agenda presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson. Second. Seconded by Mr. Hamlin. Mrs. Hutcherson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Grantree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Mappus?
Yes.
Mr. Bro.
Yes, the consent agenda is going to approve. We now move to action items. The first action item is the approval to post to 2019, 2020, 2021 calendars for public review and comment. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you. I see Dr. Kyle making his way to the podium. So we'll remember at your last meeting a month ago, Dr. Kyle reviewed the results of the first survey that was done on school calendars. We seek to establish the next couple of years, received some feedback certainly from the board that we took to gather a little bit of additional information, a little bit, quite a bit of additional information. And Kyle's back here tonight to present those results and a recommendation for the calendars that we post. Just again, clarification, the action tonight on the calendar is an action to post these calendars for public review and comment. So you're not actually approving the calendar tonight, but you are approving the calendar that you intend to post that will go on for basically a 30-day public review period.
All right, thanks for having me. School board members, I'd like to also reiterate, thank you for all your hard work. I know tomorrow's a big day, and I know you guys don't get a lot of pay for what you do, but you have a lot of pride in your community, so I wanted to thank the board members. Couple people I'd like to thank, too. We have a number of members of the Calendar Committee that actually could make it tonight. I have Kimberly Swanson right behind me, Penny Cole in the back, and Patricia Thornberry. Just a round of applause for these members. That was part of it. And the board laughed when they said I was in charge of the calendar. I kind of know why, as we've gone through. Everybody on the Calendar Committee has done an excellent job of trying to listen to different levels. When you're a large unit district and you have elementary, middle, and high school together, not everybody's always on the same page. And one thing I can say, and I know we're going to have a member speak to this later, is that through our meetings and our discussions, we really tried to find a solution to some of the data that was brought to us. Couple things I thought might be important. All right. Okay. Couple things I thought were important. Kind of our goal was the survey faculty, staff, students, representation from EC12. We actually added two members as we had one meeting, discuss the pros and cons of different calendars, research surrounding districts, look what everybody else is doing. And then kind of the drop-dead date was today. Have a proposal for all of you. You saw the survey data already, which was 2,738 respondents. 80% of all of those were in favor of finals before break. And then I broke down the different levels as to where people stood on that. With that data... The results from the survey were shared with the board. There was a discussion from the board about having finals before break. We took that feedback from the board. We decided to have a survey go out to high school teachers and high school students, grades 10, 11, and 12. Here were the results of the high school staff. The one option of having finals before break and then having activities for them to do after and to keep the semester the same as it is traditionally was not very popular. The next one... All right. So the next one. This one's students' survey. So that's the first one. The second one, finals before break, that's the students' survey. So this one, we looked, and I did get feedback from a number of people from the high school. They were a little confused as to which choice, but you can tell 45.5 is a little bit better than having finals and just have students doing work. So the feedback we do feel from the survey told us if there was one of two choices from the high school, they would pick an imbalanced schedule here over the other one. It's a lower rating, different than the first survey, but I'll go the next, though. So on finals before break, students overwhelmingly, 75% wants, want finals before break. And the board, if you remember, you were at Wheaton North, and about four kids said yes. Four kids said no. I brought that back to the Calendar Committee. We said, we need to ask the students. Like, what are we doing our jobs for if we're not talking to students, especially at the high school? So we did ask. Some had no opinion. You would kind of suggest. 21.5 said, no, keep it as is. But that's the data we got back from students. Another question on it? I'll be down probably six or four. Sorry, guys. This was, this is your, the stress. I think one of the things we've seen other school districts go to is finals before winter break. We want to give students some break, actual time where they're not, there's not a final. You think of AP students, and you met some of them at Wheaton North when we went there. Even though they don't need to study, they're going to study over break. We're looking to try to reduce stress. This is what students did say when we got that feedback. Oh, it is working out. Great. So the November meeting was interesting, because we had two sets of feedback. We had the high school teachers that weren't overwhelmingly excited about this, but we know from the original survey, at 67% they were. Maybe there was some miscommunication there. We also had a lot of elementary... at 67% they were. Maybe there was some miscommunication there. We also had a lot of elementary representation and middle school representation. So, everybody heard what the board said. We got the feedback. All of the support staff and the teachers are all about kids in this district. We looked to see if there's any, any way to balance out. We looked at 203 and 204, which start a week early. We looked at start two days earlier, which is Barrington. They start two days earlier. They do a full week. And then we looked, start the same day. Geneva actually just started the same day, and I think they had an imbalance of 14, sometimes 16 days in that first semester. So, we saw some examples there, knowing that if finals is what the board was asking for. We looked at these examples and we talked a lot. After much discussion, the calendar committee had different views as to why this would take a little bit longer than we think. But we really felt as a committee that if we want to make a change, two days doesn't seem like a lot. Start two days early, that's easy. But if you start two days earlier, you also have a 10-day imbalance for classes. So, we are proposing as a calendar committee to have a traditional calendar for next year, keeping really everything the same, but mirroring the times and dates of this year's calendar, and then having that full year to implement this two-day earlier change and have finals before break. Couple things I wanted to share, and I, I kind of went ahead and apologized for that, is two days doesn't seem like a lot, but if you're teaching AP history, AP GOV, and you have 10 days less than you have second semester, that's a lot of, that's a lot of time you're going to have to put in to how do you make sure the class you teach first semester will also have the same, same qualities as a class second semester. So, there's a lot of curriculum work that we need to go into. High school and middle school teachers need time to reevaluate and adjust their finals. Even if you have a year-long course, 10 days, um, sooner for the final, is going to make us look at finals and reevaluate that. Teacher institutes the days this year. Each school has a leadership team. They basically plan their entire year, and this year has been planned already. Middle school teachers and high school teachers who have semester courses need to look at their curriculum, first and second quarter. At the middle school level, the feedback we got was, this is a change. Some of our quarters will be less in the first two quarters than three and four. So, we're looking at some of those hurdles. And I know, Kim, you want to come up?
There you are.
Kim wants to share a little bit about the elementary, and what we're trying to do is give you a flavor of some of the roadblocks we had as we hear what the students are saying. We also try to juggle each group. And Kim had kind of her statement that she wanted to speak about.
Thank you for letting me talk. Um, I'm used to talking to 10-year-olds and under, so a little nervous. But, um, I'm just speaking on behalf of the elementary teachers and the students. Uh, we feel that in regards to starting the beginning of the school year, um, we, at elementary level, we find a lot of stress in our little kids. Um, already in a three-day start, we start on Wednesday. Within those three days, we see children that are completely exhausted. Um, we experience meltdowns and crying periods. Um, a lot of asking even at 10 o'clock in the morning, when is it time to go home? Um, needing to put heads down for a rest, stomach aches, headaches, and many children, you know, they just miss their mom. So, there's many times we stop the learning and say, go ahead, you can draw a picture of your mom or for your mom, just to calm them down and to, to alleviate some of the stress. Um, but in that regards, we're very proud that we get to set the tone of a child's academic career at our level. And so, by doing that, we, we lay that foundation for their experience, and we want the children to have a positive start to the beginning of the school year. So, even at the elementary level, to, um, add extra days if we, if we go to the model of the full-day week, um, we're concerned about the stress and the anxiety that we're putting on our younger students. Um, I think what you just stated too is that we spent a lot of time, and we met four times as a committee, and it was just wonderful discussion to have. For me at the elementary level, it was wonderful to see the high school perspective, the middle school perspective, and then just the fact how this trickles down. This, even a two-day adjustment trickles down to that, like you just said, middle school. Elementary, the stress that they feel. And, um, so it was great to have rich discussion, the process. I love the process. But we really do feel that if we could have a year to do this well, maybe I'm stepping on...
No, you're not. Hey, I'll do the last slide.
Yeah. To just take the time and to present it well to the, to the staff, to the teachers, so that we can do it well for our kids.
I think you said it really well. I think the biggest thing that everybody, high school people, uh, that represents a high school, like, let's do this, let's do a week early. Elementary gave us, if you do a week early, people are coming back August 10th and 9th. That's very early. So, there was a lot of discussion back and forth, but how, how we came together in November was we decided the students spoke, this is what they want, let's give it to them. Let's give a traditional year so that we could plan and then unveil it 2020, 2021. And by that time, we'll have a successful unveiling of this new finals before break. Uh, a lot of other school districts, we're not the only ones that have done this. And like I said, we have examples in Barrington that do a full week, that we would like to get some of those people to talk to our elementary brethren, and then get our teachers that teach courses that they need those 10 days. How did these other schools do it? So, we have some, uh, so we have some plans in place, but I wanted to present this to the board with the calendars, a couple of things I wanted to share. Traditional calendar, one thing that did come out of this through a lot of discussion was that the high schools have finals, and then the teachers kind of have to really grade it and get it done by the end of the day. Middle school, elementary have a full day. The discussion we did talk about is that the last day of school, we were proposing for it to be a half day. So, that means half day for students. Teachers are still there. They're still working on all the things they need to do to kind of close up their school and make sure that they're done, so that they, when they go to, when they go away, everything's set up. So, that's a traditional calendar, very similar to what you have this year. The second one though, the 2021 calendar you have in your packet, it is imbalanced in 2021 of 10 days. Finals are before winter break. Semester ends before winter break. And I think when the questions were thrown out to the community, and 80% of the community and students at 76, people are telling us and teachers overwhelmingly, we're either in high 60s or low 70s, they understand that kids need a break. Even though they're young men and young women, they need a break. And this is what we're shooting for, uh, to make sure that we can get this done. So, the teacher workday kind of wraps to January 6th, and I wanted to point that out because that means for the students, they get an extra day off of winter break. Uh, teachers at high school and middle school will have a workday. Elementary would have an institute day. Adds one more day for winter break, and then again, the last day, half day for middle school and elementary. And then that kind of aligns us, EC12, everybody's on the same page. So, those are some of the changes that we're proposing. Um, also included in your packet, because I was asked to, was if we wanted to make the change next year, what I would say, and I think our committee, um, has been pretty clear, is we, we want to make sure we do this right. Um, even though it doesn't seem like a big change, it's a big change. And even though it's two days, we want to make sure our teachers have time to wrap their minds around it and do it right. So, that concludes my formal presentation. Any questions?
I'll start, since I've been the most vocal about calendar for the last couple of years. Um, I am going to just start off by saying I support doing a traditional calendar next year and taking that year, and I want to give a few reasons why. Um, if we were to jump to the new calendar, uh, I want to, I want to address what that means to staff. We would be looking at our staff having to come back now the week before, and we're giving not a whole lot of time. I know people have vacation scheduled, and I don't know that that's really fair on our part to, uh, to do that. So, that's number one. Number two, I, um, Jenna and I will serve on the, the teaching and learning committee, and we have been having many discussions on final examinations. What do finals mean? What are the purpose? Um, many departments, and, and I'm so excited about what I have seen, um, between both of our high schools, have been really reevaluating. And we're spending all this time on that. Our finals are going to need to be rewritten as is. Let's do it and do it well. And take the information, try to make it more authentic. I think if we take that time and we develop them now, we're not wasting time by just saying, let's get something ready in, in less amount of time. Um, I, I am concerned in terms of, you know, those, those semester classes and the imbalance and, and what does that mean? And one of the things I want to toss out there is if we had that extra year, would we have the ability to pilot in some of our classes? What does that mean to try to take that final before break and see and work out some of those logistical things? Because I know we tried this several years ago, and we went back. And I don't want us to have to do that again. I'd like us to try to work out as many logistical things as we can. So, I think it makes a lot of sense to keep the traditional calendar so that we can work through this. But I love that you asked the students. I think that that really solidifies the conversation we've had over the past couple of years, and we're, we're taking in what they, and if it's going to reduce stress and we're going to truly be able to give them a break, I think that's wonderful. But I'd like us to be able to, I've, I've been the elementary teacher. I know what that beginning of the year is like. And I'm also a parent of a high school student, and, and they're two very different lives. And we really need to take the time and, and make sure we're doing this correctly. So, that's why I support the traditional calendar for next year, and let's make the change that year.
Anyone else have a comment, a question?
Um, just the title of it, that I mentioned this to Jeff in my first studies. Um, I'm, especially if you're posting this for review, for, for people to be looking at and understand what they're looking at, I'm not comfortable with the one that says draft finals ending before semester ends, because both of them have finals. Well, no, I, that conjures up in my brain what we did several years back. I went back and looked at my calendars. It was either seven, eight, nine, or eight, nine, 10, December. They did finals in December, and that was before the semester ended, because in those years, the semester didn't end till the middle of January. But the way this is written, and what we're talking about changing to, is not finals ending before the semester ends. It's simply finals taking place before, before winter break. So, I just, I want to...
We can make that change.
Yeah. Because otherwise, it's a lot to look at and to not know what you're...
We can make that change. I'm probably going like seven or eight drafts on these, so...
I'm, I'm anticipating what's in red comes off when you post them. I mean, what you're posing is just the calendar.
This is the draft, so that they can see it. And, uh, every time I've put these calendars out to a group of people, I get another, oh, correct this, so we could change that and take the red off and put it up. If you choose to, um, go with the calendar committee's proposal, the red will be gone, and it'll just be the calendars.
Is there a way to note when finals take place? Because I, I don't think that's explicit on there.
We've never put it on any other calendars, uh, but we, we might be able to do that. I know just looking at past calendars, we've never put that on there.
I know we haven't, but if we're posting these with, and that's what the change is, I think that needs to be obvious to people who are looking at it.
We can do that.
Brad?
Yeah, I'm supportive of the traditional calendar next year and moving to the start two days earlier, try to get finals done before for 2020, 21.
2021, yeah.
I would actually like to do it earlier than that, but that's okay. I agree with Chris's comment, and I certainly understand the time needed to adjust, um, uh, curriculum especially. I guess, looking forward, I'd like to really, you, Chris made a comment at the last board meeting about it's really impacting electives, those electives that are one semester versus another semester. And now we're taking maybe 10 days off that, so it's basically changing the student experience, what they're able to learn. So, I, I guess I'd like to see that with some electives and really truly which classes it's impacting. Maybe we can assemble that. Probably don't need that before we make a decision in 30 days, but that would be informative. And then I kind of did a survey at home last night of this issue. And so, as it relates to that, a lot of these electives are, um, not exams, they're moving towards projects, right? So, the other reality is that if you move the end of the semester before winter break, you're really losing like three weeks of time to work on projects. Because you're not only, you're, you're losing the two weeks over the holidays, but you're losing that extra week and a half or so. So, it, it does impact classes or heavy projects. So, we're literally having a lot of lost time for those students working on projects. So, that would be, you know, so not only the list of, of electives that are impacted, but which of those are really impacted by projects. And then the other thought was, I didn't, I'd really appreciate the comments on the elementary school, you know, starting at the value, starting Wednesday versus Monday. Just a general question for future discussion, is it, is it impossible to have a stagger start for two days? High school, middle school start on a Monday, and elementary school start on a Wednesday. I know it's a transportation thing, but it's only two days.
I can say that the committee has talked about that. Um, that has been a discussion at SLT Calendar Committee. I've talked to a number of principals. Some say, we want to start and do full day and just get the kids ready and go. And some have said, we like maybe the idea of a half day. So, that's something I know the committee can still look at. Like, we have some time before 2021, and we wanted to get some more feedback from the schools and from their leadership teams as well. So, that is something we've discussed, but we didn't come to consensus, consensus before we presented.
Brad, I'm aware of, I think, two school districts that have tried that, have not heard positive feedback from either of them. That just, it, it, I, I get it in terms of the student piece, but you just have to remember the number of families that have kids that cross over multiple levels. And so, then you've got, you know, you, you, you literally have a very different schedule, right? You know, so that, it, the feedback, we can look into it, but the feedback has not been positive from those that tried it.
I believe Elmore School District is one of those. And my thought, my, I'm not suggesting anything, but just my thinking was if, if a family has an elementary and a high school kid, they're going to be back, you know, a few days earlier. So, I'm, I'm a little more, you know, to the, to the comments earlier, it's more about the student as opposed to the, the family impact, or it's the two days. So, that's my, not many families I can imagine come back from a summer vacation a day before school starts.
I have a question on, uh, we have 180 days, correct?
176.
177. So, basically, that would be half a, half a year would be what, 80, you know, or 78 days each? So, if we, when we say this now, are we saying that it'll be 73 and 83? Is that a 10-day difference?
For 2021, it's 83 days in the first semester, and then the second semester is 93 days. So, you have a 10-day difference.
That's almost a 10% change. I mean, okay.
That's why, that's why we feel like we need some time to...
Yeah, yeah. Uh, okay. How many testing days that are there in each semester? Just, you know, like PSAT or whatever the case may be, particularly at high school.
At the middle school and high school, there are testing days in the second semester that eat up some of your days, park.
How many are those?
I wouldn't know from middle school. Five.
Five.
Right. And then high school, you have the SAT.
So, six.
Yeah.
So, in reality, then, we're 73 days versus 77 days. Is that fair?
There's a lot of different ways to look at that 10-day spread for sure. I mean, because definitely second semester, you have some testing that's involved at, at middle school and high school, that, that definitely cuts down the difference between 10.
Yeah, it starts with...
It does. There, it does. And I think that's part of what the teachers need to kind of start looking at. How do we, how do we make 10 days not look like 10 days? How do we make our course first semester be just as robust as it is second semester? Maybe you go deeper on some topics second semester. First semester, you get what they need to know. Um, I know it's been done, so it's not impossible. I just think teachers need that time to have those discussions like you are, Jim.
Okay. And then, uh, you know, the, I hear in the words of elimination of finals, I know we've talked about that. What's the probability that's going to happen? I, you know, is that at the service doors, doors preparing for ballots as well? I mean, you know, I, I, that confuses me when we talk about elimination of finals.
I, I don't know that we've talked about elimination of finals. I think we've talked about reshaping of finals. And so, um, I, I think there are a number of different ways that you can assess learning. And I think there's a time and a place for each of those modalities, and I think they will always be a part of our system. And I also think, and I think the conversation at, at Teaching and Learning Committee is, uh, that the, those in the best position to determine the best way to assess learning is the teacher in that classroom. I don't think the board wants to be, while, while I think the board can certainly take a role in helping to drive and guide the conversation around professional learning, I don't think that the board is really going to want to set a policy around exactly how a final needs to look in each individual class, because I just think there are a lot of different ways that that can look. What we want is for effective assessment of student learning. We want effective, uh, modalities, and we want it aligned to the instructional goals. So, I don't think there's been though any conversation, Jim, about like completely wiping out the finals.
Then, uh, the, um, sorry, I lost my notes here. Uh, the, um, I, I, I lost track here. So, oh, no, the sports, that's good. The, with the sporting activities would not start earlier. I mean, there's no ISHA rule, so that has no bearing on this. And most classes now, I mean, most sports are at least a week before the start of school anyway. So, that affects that vacation time for those participating. So, okay. So, okay.
It will, though, and I think, and Charlie can probably speak to this even better from the high school perspective. I think one of the things that got skipped over is that this will reshape the nature of activities, especially in our high schools leading up to that exam window. So right now, there are a number of concerts, there are a number of school activities that take place in that last week before winter break that are going to get reshaped. That's not necessarily good or bad, just the reality, you know, and same with athletics. We tend to be very conscientious of the way those activities get scheduled during the finals window. And so, again, that's just another reason why I think it makes some sense to make sure we've got a year to plan and schedule appropriately, because a lot of that stuff's done for next year. That's how far in advance a lot of that scheduling is done.
I guess my final comment then is, when we see those kinds of percentages, I mean, who do we represent? The community and the community has kind of spoken on this. So I think it's just a matter of do it orderly and get it done, and, you know, before, and hopefully we don't have to go back and change it.
Any other comments or questions?
Charlie, what we're going to post? Are we going to post two calendars, one for 2019-20, and then another calendar for 2021 at the same time?
We would post based on the motion of the board. I think that our request is that we just post one calendar for 1921, calendar for 2021. So the calendar committee's recommendation is that you post the calendar that has still the red tap that says "traditional draft" for 1920. And then for 2021, you will post the calendar that actually is on the back of that one. So it's, that one's double-sided. The traditional draft, the two-day early start. Without what would be in red, that'll come off before it gets posted.
Based upon the flow of the conversation, the discussion we've had, I'm going to make a, I'm going to ask for a motion that we approve posting the traditional calendar for 2019-2020, and then the two-day early start calendar for 2021. If that passes, then we'll need to address that calendar.
So I want to end my earlier comment about kind of looking at the electives. As I'm listening to this, I realize that in some electives, the one semester electives, they're offered both semesters. And that, to me, is really at the core of the issue, is how do you, how do you have a curriculum that's 10 days less or seven, wherever it winds up, that, you know, the next semester, that becomes really complicated. So that's kind of what I want to dig into.
Yeah, we had two elective high school representatives on the committee, actually from the North South. And they were very quick to say, you know, we could sit down with our PLC and talk about what is the thing that we feel we can cut for semester, still keep the integrity of the course, and then offer maybe second semester where maybe there is one more module, but it's still hitting the same standards they want. Those were just the representatives, two representatives. But they were quick to talk about what they would do with their PLCs. And some of them, they're their own PLC, they're the teachers. So they talked about, that's what they would look at, is what is the core underlying skills that we want to teach in an elective in a semester-long course? And how do we make sure both still hit those skills that you want to hit? And maybe with 10 extra days or less with testing, you might do a little bit more, but it might just be getting more in-depth on something. That's, that's the discussion the teachers will have.
What percentage of our classes are semester-long only, or a lot, or no?
A lot, a lot of electives.
There are a lot of electives. So I mean, you might have, I mean, I guess in terms of overall, like, number of courses, but a lot of them are kind of like singleton electives, right? So, I mean, I represent the biggest percentage of actual classes taught? Does that make sense what I mean? You know, because some of our core classes, there are tons and tons of sections that are being offered.
Yeah, I would think, I would think that the, you know, again, the typical high school student has one elective per semester, maybe one and a half kind of average. So I mean, we're not even talking about whole, every class. In fact, it's really a, not only a component of those electives, but I think this is kind of more interesting.
Actually, two AP classes, if you think about it. The AP tests are earlier in May, so they're already shortened.
Judging when the test is, you could look at when the test is, and you could, you could balance those two semesters. That's another, that's another tool that I would suggest teachers do.
I think you said the last meeting that seniors get out a week early. So really, we're talking about juniors, right? So that's, this is impacting junior students to take electives. Because freshmen, sophomores generally don't get electives. So the more you talk about it, the more you're really narrowing down the issue.
Now, when you move up the start of that school year, they're not going to get out as early as they've gotten out perhaps in the past. So, your daughter won't thank you for that, because she'll be a senior in that year or so.
Any further comments or questions?
Pretty soon, you know, we have Jefferson out of the way, and we got the calendar out of the way. What are we going to do for the rest of the year?
Don't say that. Jim, don't say that. Thank you.
So at last, just last summary before we take the vote, I do just, so those that have been on the board for a while, if you, if you do reflect on the amount of time input kind of gathered in this, it represents a marked shift over how we did used to address calendar within the district. And I think that's a positive thing in making sure that we really try to make sure this represented the needs and the interest of all constituents. So when you gather information, it's, sometimes it's messy, right? It's not, not necessarily a linear process. But thank you to Charlie and the committee for, I think, kind of wading through all of that and continuing to come back to, why are we doing this and what are people saying about it? So thanks for that.
Hey, Jim, that's for going to survey high school students if they want more sleep.
Law changes are always the most controversial in second-class calendar. I would like to have a motion and a second to approve the posting of the traditional calendar for 2019 and 20, and 2021, the two-day step early start calendar. If the public are feeling comment, they have a motion and a second.
So?
Move by Mrs. Erickson.
Second.
Second move by Mrs. Catherine. Mrs. Richardson, who's called role.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Thank you, Chris, for dragging this for so many years, and I'm recording your vote.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Crowley?
Yes. Motion to post the traditional calendar for 2019-20, and the revised calendar for 2021 has been passed. We now move to the second action items. It's the optional 2018 levy, Dr. Schuler.
Mr. Farley's going to take the board through this. So the finance committee reviewed the recommendation that the full board is going to see tonight at its last meeting. And again, Mr. Farley's going to walk you through the levy recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. This is the time of year where we ask the board to consider the administration's recommendation for the annual levy process. As Dr. Schuler mentioned, the finance committee did review this last week, I believe it was. Mr. Gambiani and Mr. Matheson approved this presentation and recommendation from the administration. I've been run through the levy terms. I'd like to just remind you know, because we look at this on an annual basis, just review some of the levy terms that were already discussed today. The first is property tax extension limitation law. That's tax caps, as commonly referred to, came into place in New Page County in 1994. Not every county in the state is under tax caps, which people believe it's a statewide program. It's not. It has to be adopted at the county level. So New Page County did adopt this in 1994, so we're under tax caps. Basically, what that indicates is that we are limited to our request from the community for our aggregate levy, our operating levy of the school district by the consumer price index. So as an example, if a school district had a levy of $100 and the CPI was 1%, they could get $101 the following year. So every year, every year, works that way with the CPI. But we are limited to the CPI of 5%, which is ever less. It's never been 5%. Never got that high. When it went into place, CPI was much higher, and they thought that cap needed to be in place, but we've never gotten relatively close to that. Consumer Price Index is an index that comes out each year. We use the one for December, year over year. We haven't, we won't know that number until January of this year for the levy that's upcoming. And it's a, basically a basket of goods, but gasoline seems to kind of always seem to be the driver of the consumer price index. So we do monitor that throughout the year. Equalized success valuation is the property wealth of the school district. Again, we talked, as we talked about, the impacts of the economy on EAV and what the property wealth of the district is. You'll see some historical charts which will show what's happened over time. Then finally, the tax rate and how that is impacted as well. We'll have a chart that shows some information relative to how the tax rate in the district flows and correlates with the property value of the district. As I mentioned, this Consumer Price Index is released by the Bureau of Labor each year. It's a month-over-month index, year over year, based on the month. And we wait for December. And then again, correlation to that CPI, that basket of goods, or the price we ask doesn't always correlate to what we do as a business. Again, we're 80% of what we do as people, it's value and benefits. So there's differences sometimes in that CPI versus what we do as a district. This is the history of the 10-year CPI. You can see it's been kind of all over the place over the last 10 years. It's about 1.6%, I believe, if you average it out over the last 10 years. The last five years, it's about 1.4 or 5%. But you can see it's been as low as 1/10 of a percent in the last 10 years, and as high as 3%. Interesting enough, the last two years, last year when we came to the levy request, it was 2.1% of the levy finished there this year. And we always continue to monitor that CPI as we go throughout this year. And then we use that CPI indicator when we do the five-year financial forecasting, which we do in January, which is after we find out what the CPI will be for the upcoming levy year. EAV history, again, property wealth value of the school district. You can see when the economy and housing market was doing, well, pre-2008, the EAV was going up over time, leading up to 2008. And then as the economy and the housing market started to falter, you can see that the EAV or the property wealth of the school district started to go down over time. And now we're starting to see a rebound again, and we're almost back where we were back in late first part of the decade of 2000. Our, our school district is in three different townships, with the primary one being Milton Township. About 85% of the school district is Milton Township, with 13% in Winfield, and a very small percentage in April Township. We rely on the township to provide us estimates at this time. When we do the levy, we don't know what the EAV is going to be overall for the school district. And we're talking about new construction. We don't always know that new construction, and we're only getting estimates. When Milton Township has indicated that EAV is going to go up by about 5.5%, as I've mentioned on that previous chart, we are seeing the equalized success valuation of the school district rebounding. And so we're starting to see that come back up. The other townships are a little bit less than that, but again, with Winfield being, or excuse me, with Milton being 85%, that's EAV percentage that we're using as we start to do our estimates for the overall value of the school district. Our description of EAV, we are rooftops, a lot of homes. Almost 79% of our property in the school district is rooftops, is homes. We have about 20, a little over 21% that makes up commercial and industrial, and then a small percentage of farms, railroad. And you remind the board that we are in a, our school district, we have a lot of forest preserved property, college, park districts, churches, county seats. All those properties are off the tax roll. So there's a good percentage of our school district that we're not collecting property taxes. Other districts do have more industry, more commercial. Our largest tax carrier is Chicago Golf. So interesting factors, and some of the areas down in Donata, some of the commercial and residential properties in, you know, 121, some of, there's some of the larger property providing as far as the property wealth of the district.
Bill, just, I guess maybe the finance committee, it would be interesting to see this chart for our benchmark districts. If I don't know if that's available, that's, that's a way to get that to...
I think you probably knew that through our forecast by group.
But, you know, like, we may just... That's one way to look at it. But it would be interesting to be able to compare the districts, because some districts, to the south of us, I think the blue box is going to be a lot less. So if I request, I'd like to see that going forward.
I mentioned new construction. And again, when I gave the CPI example of $100 and, you know, 1% CPI, 101, the tax cap also takes into consideration new construction. New construction, it could be anything from paradigms to new subdivisions to new business that's built within, in existence before. And so, the tax capital allows us to capture that new growth as it comes on the property tax rolls for the first time. We've talked, had conversations in the past about Amazon. The other big new construction value that can happen is when TIFs come back on the tax rolls. TIFs, our EAV for the school district is frozen, and then when it comes back on the tax rolls, 23 later, years later at the most, sometimes they end earlier, you see new construction. So I always like to point out the anomaly of 2010, when the Cantera development came back on the property tax rolls. I think that equated to about $2.6 million of new funding for the school district from what was a rock quarry to what is now Cantera. Remind everyone that the commercial side, most of the commercial properties that are in Aprilville 203, we have more of housing in some of the commercial business, but obviously that was a big year for us as hard as 2010. Again, this is an estimate we get from, from the different townships. In 2016, we had two TIFs in Meaton, smaller TIFs in Meaton and Carroll Street. And then in 2017, we saw a partial Amazon come on the tax rolls. We now know that Amazon's fully going to be on the tax rolls this year, so that it's also a good factor for us. We know we're, we've got an estimate of about $33 million of new growth for this year.
So one question I have, can you explain for the group and for me again, so that one year that the property comes on the tax roll, comes in at the full value of that property? So what would happen the following year to that property?
Well, it's then added into the overall EAV of the school district. So it's, it sets, you know, that new base, aggregate base for us. It's included in the overall amount we received that year, so then the CPI isn't taken. It adds the, what we received in the aggregate, that's from the CPI, allows that new growth, and that creates a new aggregate total, and the CPI is calculated off of that. That's...
But that one year, that first year that property comes on the tax rolls, pretty critical, right, to capture the full...
To capture, absolutely.
The full value of it, especially, generally, that's not residential property.
Correct.
I believe that.
Yeah. Absolutely. So this year, we're anticipating about $33 million, which includes the rest of the Amazon and other properties coming on, based on the estimates we received from the different townships. Again, because those numbers aren't final, and we don't know that number, so we always use, we talk to our townships and use an estimate, and then ask for a levy increase to make sure we capture that with some latitude, because we, again, it's an estimate. This chart just illustrates the CPI and then what our actual extension is for the last 10 years. And that delta, again, between the CPI and the blue line and the red line is basically the new growth in the school district. So again, 2010 always stands out overall as far as the difference in what we received versus the CPI. And it's really just capturing that new growth as it comes on the tax rolls. Talk a little bit too, I've talked about the EAV CPI, the tax rate, and the impact of that. This chart just illustrates that, again, that we're limited to the CPI, but basically how the tax rate is driven is what's going on with the existing EAV of the school district. If the existing EAV stays relatively flat, the tax rates generally will stay flat. When you're in a time when the existing EAV is increasing, which, as I mentioned, between 2005 and 2009, that drives the tax rate down. And then when the EAV goes down, we start to see the tax rate come back up. And that's what happened between 2010 and '14, when, when, again, the housing market was going down, and property values were coming down, we started to see that tax rate come back up. This is a chart of the last five years, and again, captures a little bit, as you see, from 2013 to 2014, our overall tax rate started to go up. And then, starting in 2015, when we saw the EAV start to rise again, you see that the actual tax rate of the school district started to come down. With 5.5% projected increase on EAV, we anticipate that the overall tax rate will continue to decline. Just to break down, this is the 2017 levies, this is prior levy, just some information. Operationally, our operational or aggregate tax rate was about, or about 87% of our overall levy, with about $134 million being operational, and then $20 million, a little over $20 million is related to debt or principal interest on our bonds.
Bill, one more question I have. I'm just going to keep interrupting.
No, that's fine.
And the PTEL, the tax cap, applies to... And the PTEL, the tax cap implies that the blue part of that doesn't, it doesn't impact at all the red part.
Correct.
Red part is whatever debt service we have to pay in that year.
Correct. So what does that debt service look like? The debt service, again, this chart is what will happen. We are, the board's aware, we passed a resolution back in 2012 or '13, I believe, to do a four-phase refinancing and refunding of our, our loan debt. So this schedule, as you look at it, is assumed after the phase four is completed, which we'll be asking the board to do here soon. The finance committee is going to be reviewing that relatively quickly. And you can see that 2018, after 2018, we dropped down to a little over $20 million out of debt service. It'll level off at about $19 million for the next four years, and then it'll drop down to about $14 million in 2023, drop again down to about $12 or $13 million for the last two years of the debt. And then the debt will fall off by 2026. So we do see that if that comes down, that'll obviously have an impact on tax bills as well. So how much should we receive to get based on what we talked about, how tax caps work? Our average levy last year was just over $134 million with the CPI at 2.1%. Our overall increase would take us to a little over $136.8 million. We want to capture that new growth. Mr. Paulson mentioned it's important to capture that new growth when it comes on the tax rolls. We're anticipating about $33 million of new growth. Every one million is about $4,000 to $3,000 additional funds. So if you do that quick math in your head, that's just under $1.5 million in additional dollars that we will recapture, which will, again, include the Amazon building. The debt service number, based off our principal and interest payments for next year for this levy will be just over $20.7 million. And then going back to our bottom interest chart, that's 2018, as you can see. And then overall, our levy request for this year, our levy request is asking for 3.7% for our aggregate levy. Again, the CPI is 2.1%. And we are levying 1.7% more because we want to make sure we capture that $33 million of new growth. So we always levy a little bit higher, and obviously higher than the CPI to make sure we capture that new growth. And based on the estimates, we also put in a little bit, I expect to make sure that we capture it in case there's something unforeseen or something that the township they have missed, so we can give ourselves a little bit of latitude. So our overall request this year is 3.7%. And we know that number will be adjusted based on PTEL, when the final new construction comes in. You can see our debt service is at $20.733. So overall, it's about a 3.28% increase. But our aggregate levy request for, to the Board of Education is for a 3.7% increase. Just some considerations in that regard, the aggregate levy collection was anticipated as we do our budget and as we do our financial modeling going forward. We want to make sure we capture that new growth, as we've mentioned a few times, including the Amazon fully coming on. And obviously, the impact of making sure we capture all this as future funding of capital projects that are identified that we'll be talking over the next few months here as far as trying to tackle those items that are identified in the capital plan by accessing the tax, the CPI as well as any growth that helps us in that process. So our overall request today is to make sure that we access the CPI that's afforded to the tax cap plus any growth, which is at 3.7% for the request. With that, I'll take questions or the finance committee has their questions.
I've got a few questions or comments, but let's just start with a couple. Jefferson, the referendum just asked, would this levy be any different if, if the referendum had not been?
No, no, not at all.
Okay. How about next year would it change?
No.
Okay. You're asked. So consistently, the Jefferson and the way that it's going to be financed will not cause this levy to change. And this is levy on property. Okay. If we decided for some reason that we want to lower the levy to make it the same dollar amount as last year, and therefore the rate would drop, it would be less than the CPI increase, could we, if the state law allow catch-up in the future where, let's say they, let's say the number's 2.1%, or 2% this year, 3% wherever. If we didn't levy a 3% increase, could we levy 6% next year, assuming the CPI was the same? Okay, so we'd lose that in effect forever. Okay. Okay. And if we did that, just to understand that again, if we lower, if we set, let's say, the levy the same, will our costs change? Obviously not. We have built in, there's potential inflation in everything we do. And in addition, we have contracts for, how long's our contract with staff, four-year? Four-year contracts that have a fixed, either a fixed or a CPI-related cost to it. Is that correct? So if we were to leave the levy dollar value the same, we would have to reduce staff or something to fund those reductions of not catching that revenue, is that correct? Does this by itself allow us to raise money to fund our deferred maintenance, this levy? Is it, or do we have to have that budget terribly on the expense side? In other words, the levy itself is not creating new money because of this increase?
Correct.
All right. So we have to get budget, structure our budget to fund capital improvements, whatever we did not pass in referendum prior to this one.
Correct.
Okay. And that's where the Sherman Dirges program comes into play. Okay. All right. Now, the Sherman Dirges issue, again, to fund that, you know, we're going to potentially just fund the allowance, that's not reflected in these numbers?
No.
Okay. Okay. I heard today, and I know of a couple, two other organizations involved, that Wheaton Towers has been sold and had a gigantic sale price over its market value. I heard a number of $40 million market value today, a sale at $160. So that $160 million. So if that increase is there, does that cause us to get more revenue? Because of, okay, why is?
Because we're limited by the CPI. And what it'll do is if, usually when, when property is sold, the assessors will, the sale is considered an armstrong transaction. So the new assessment will reflect that. So that actually will help not shift the burden. It'll, you know, the taxes collected there. We still get the amount, same amount, but that sale will probably indicate that they would pay, we pay different taxes based on the new sale rate. But it does not ensure, it does not give us additional dollars.
So in effect, that is saying because the same pool of money will be raised, and if they have higher assessments to contribute, or forget about new construction plan, that would imply an entire community otherwise would get less. They'll pay less, I guess, like that.
Correct.
All right. Now, why is the Amazon property different than that?
Because it's coming under the property tax rolls as, as new growth. And this is, when property comes on as new growth, that is the time to capture that money because the, aside from that 2.1%, we receive that based on existing property in the school district. When it comes on, that the tax rate for the, to garner the 2.1% is often aside against that new property growth. And that's the $43,000 for every million.
Okay. So that, that by itself, we have to anticipate that. In other words, if they're paying an estimated, I think, $700,000 in the future, if we didn't levy an amount sufficient to capture that new construction, we wouldn't get that.
Correct.
And we would never capture that in the future.
Correct.
Once it's on, it's off.
Correct.
Okay. And then the debt service, I was just looking at the prior years a lot, we don't have this year's yet. But I noticed your schedule showed a level funding. Did you have that, that schedule for a little quick second? The debt service schedule? Okay. So this is saying that in 2018, you would spend a little over $20 million. When I look at the current, or last year's law, and I look at the same years, I notice that the first year is about the same. But if I go to 2021, the rate that would have required to pay off the debt that year would be $25 million as compared to 19. So what caused that to happen?
The restructuring that the board has done over time. And the final phase is still, come phase four, but that restructuring has leveled out the debt over time, so we don't have that spike.
Okay. So in fact, that is required, and otherwise my taxes, it'll, everybody else is going to jump to need it to cover that $5 or $6 million.
Correct.
Okay. So we have to go through this next phase in order to achieve this, et cetera. And in the first phase, just to be clear again, we did save some money on the payment schedule because of the drop of interest rates, et cetera, even though it was longer.
All phases have been, yes, saved.
Okay. All right. Okay. No more leading questions left. So retire, retire. I really appreciate leading questions. Are any other comments or questions from board members?
As regards to the Amazon property, can you refresh our boys' memory about the abatement we agreed to for the first two years and how that structured? Have we gotten into that yet? How does abatement work?
Yeah, the abatement will, we'll start with this year because this is the first year it's fully assessed. So the board committed to a two-year abatement of, or abatement of, for two years once it's fully assessed for the first two years. So that, and it is handled at the county clerk's office. I think it's $325,000, three to two years. And we have some protection in their favor to try and get some tax relief or something new or file a motion to lower their taxes, so.
And, and we were, we were one of many local government entities that agreed to that taxation.
The city of Warren, the city of Warrenville, the school district were all involved in trying to, to attract Amazon.
Right. And it was related to traffic intersection work on Route 59 into that property? Otherwise, if all those agencies or entities didn't agree to that abatement, the project might not have happened. Correct. The complexity of Route 59.
I have a question. Isn't there, I think you spoke maybe a couple of meetings ago about a new residential area in the south area. Is that in the works at all? And is that something that would anticipate possibly coming in as a new, a new growth situation? That happens for residential as well, correct?
Yeah. When it came on, it would be new growth. I haven't heard anything new. I'm assuming you're talking about the one that's actually in Naperville, but in our district. I haven't heard an update on that, but, but when and if that does happen, come on as growth for us.
I did hear about property coming on, and there's big plans for development in Warrenville too. And that, that is, we talked to the mayor at a session the other day, that they have a lot of property coming on. Now, don't forget that, you know, like Wheaton Towers or, you know, the Amazon building that's for these children, where, you know, Palatow, and that's, you know, he answers to our calls. Any other questions or comments via Bill or Dr. Schloss?
Here again, I ask for a motion, second, to adopt the 2018 levy as presented, that the certificate of tax levy be, no, be executed, and that all forms be filed, the county clerk has presented. Do I have such a motion? Move by Mr. Gambiani. Second, by Mr. Matheson. Please call the board.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Grantery?
Yes.
Mrs. Yarison?
Yes.
Mr. Hammett?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Yes. The motion to adopt the 2018 levy as presented, that the certificate of tax levy be executed, that all forms be filed, the county clerk has presented as passed. And now we move on to the third act item, acceptance of IASB resolutions and direction for delegate voting. Dr. Schur?
Thank you, Mr. Bronn. So the board back in September received a copy of the resolutions from the Illinois Association of School Boards as a way of review. Each year here, I believe the association adopts a set of resolutions. It does not necessarily mean all of those things will find their way into law. It just defines the legislative priorities for the association. And at its annual meeting, each respective school board in the state has an opportunity to vote on the resolutions. So you get one vote, as do all other school districts around the state. So you received a copy of those resolutions in September. At our last meeting, we discussed in detail one of the resolutions in particular where I think there was some concern about our board voting consistent with the recommendation of IASB. And that had to do with resolution number two, that was the one that dealt with allowing for local control around the issue of arming teachers. I don't believe that our board is in favor of support for that resolution. And so our recommendation this evening is that you direct your delegate to vote against the recommendation of the association in regard to number two, but, but support the recommendation of the association in regard to the other resolutions that were out there.
Any comments or questions with respect to the motion? Here again, I ask for a motion to approve the IASB resolutions and direct the delegate to vote against resolution number two at the delegate assembly at the IASB joint annual conference in November 17, 2018, as presented. Do I have such a motion?
Send it.
Move by Mrs. Grab.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Aaronson. I'll just send the two all along.
Mrs. Grantery?
Yes.
Mrs. Yarison?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Yes. The motion to approve the IASB resolution and direct the delegate to vote against resolution number two, that was the delegate assembly as passed. As I offered on our last board meeting, I welcome the opportunity to be the delegate for the board, unless somebody else wishes to step forward. Thank you.
Just FYI from a conversation before, I see that Bryce is out there, and certainly from the teachers' side, I believe that they are appreciative of the action that the board took this evening on that one. So I wanted to mention that.
The next item on the general overall reports, the first overall report is the All-Day Kindergarten update. Dr. Schur?
Mr. Dr. Schlock is going to take this one. The board's getting a nice copy of all of the senior leadership team, your presentation. So Dr. Schlock, you're in.
Sure. In your packets, there's a one page on the All-Day Kindergarten, All-Day Kindergarten update. This is a response to that last board meeting. There was some, a little bit more information. Before we kind of just dive into some of the logistics, just a little context that this week, start with kind of where the research sits with All-Day Kindergarten from kind of a global perspective. Most of the literature supports increased academic outcomes for our students that are at risk across the country, being at risk either coming into kindergarten with limited readiness skills, or having a risk factor against them, whether it be social, emotional, coming from a poverty-stricken home, second language, some of those cases. Most of the literature supports, you know, a full-day kindergarten program will give you some increased academic outcome above a half-day. For our students that come with readiness skills, right? The literature shows some increase for All-Day Kindergarten, but not at the higher levels or the amount or the level of the effect for disadvantaged students. History of our program, this actually started 2011, 2012. And the initial thought or target around it was kind of two or three pieces. First being, can we target and provide a fuller, more comprehensive day for our students that are coming to us with limited readiness skills, for our students? The second piece really is also a, was a community piece, I think, looking at offerings programs to our community, a piece of it even for our students that have readiness skills coming to kindergarten. It's also a matter of providing a full-day experience as a parent, also having a full-day kindergarten experience within the public schools. So the third piece, and I don't know if this was an intentional target in 2011, 2012 when we rolled out the program, it's also an opportunity to dig a little deeper with some of the curriculum and content as well, provide some enrichment. So when it was rolled out also, we were coming off the end of some pretty significant budget cuts. So there was really a philosophy that if we were going to introduce this program, it would be cost-neutral at minimum and not come with a cost. So that just gives you some history and really how, how the sections are qualified by enrollment numbers, the interest in the program. So that's research and history. So now we kind of dive into just some of the logistics, some background on All-Day Kindergarten, and then I'll take some questions. Really, the difference in the day, if we think about a half-day, is two and a half hours. A full day is a full day of school. Curriculum being the same, but the time to dig in is much longer, obviously. Another difference, obviously, is our full-day kindergarten students eat lunch and recess at school. They also get art, music, and PE, but our half-day kids get PE as well. There's a fee with our program. You can see that on there. It has not changed since we started the program. It's $4,000 for our paying students, and it is $200 for any of our students that qualify. It's $4,000 for our paying students, and it is $200 for any of our students that qualify for free and reduced lunch underneath federal guidelines. And then there's just a brief summary there of the enrollment history. You can see that definitely this year, maybe more than here, we really have kind of an equal dispersment between All Day and Half-Day Kindergarten. And we have a section of All Day Kindergarten in every single one of our buildings. And at five of our buildings, we actually have two sections of the full-day kindergarten, those being Lincoln Madison, Pleasant Hill, Washington, and Weasbrooke. So, just a brief overview, overall, we're glad on there were some questions at our last meeting.
In the case of, before the budget cuts, was it half-day only? Or, okay, so that was an addition here to put a full day in, put at a cost of tuition effect?
Correct.
Okay. And in total numbers, it's, you know, the numbers of students have dropped on total kindergarten. That's just a byproduct of the decline in enrollment, I assume? And, you know, I'm just looking at back, it was about, you know, almost $1,000, 2013 versus $800.
Yeah, if you look, there's been a slight decline for when you look at 2012 to 2019, yes. We do always capture some students, though, in first grade when they come as well, but there is a slight decline overall if you look at that, overall kindergarten.
Is the, we have approximately a 30% free and reduced lunch component to our students. Is this consistent with that? Or would you say that in the case of the All Day, there's more free and reduced?
Yeah. In our, for this year, in our All Day Kindergarten, we're capturing 42% of our low-income students, or students that qualify for free and reduced lunch, as opposed to 15% of our students in our half-day. So, we are definitely, from one perspective, capturing some of the students that may have some at-risk factors in that piece.
As you said, that's who'd be most benefited by that full-day program?
One of the groups, yes. You know, that's one of the risk factors that could be. Other ones being second language. We capture 22% of our students in our All Day Kindergarten program that are yellow, as opposed to 13% in our half-day. The other consideration though, too, is you don't want to have full-day classrooms that are consistently 25 students that are all at risk. We want balance within all of our classrooms. So, I think we're still achieving that, but at the same time, there is a higher, higher amount of students with at-risk factors in our full-day kindergarten programs, if you look at the numbers.
Chris, how do you make the math work as the percentages are dropping significantly, one where the other is very free and reduced, and yet the $4,000 fee remains intact, yet we're about 50-50 now? And that ratio probably didn't exist. Are we truly cost-neutral based on those percentages?
Are we truly cost-neutral? No, I would say we're probably more, we are more than plus to be, when you kind of look at it, we have right now 239, 240 that are full-paying approximately last time we ran it. So, you're getting, when you kind of wrote all the pieces, we're the plus a little bit.
Question, how do you decide how many sections a school gets?
Sure. Really, by enrollment and interest. So, there's an interest process that happens in late winter, early spring, where people count their interests in attending All Day Kindergarten. And then really, you start to formulate your list, depending on interest if you're going to run a section, right? So, this year, we're running in all of our buildings. That always hasn't been the case in the past. So, if you have a building that only has seven, eight, nine, 10 kids of interest, you may not run a section. This year, our All Day Kindergarten sections are pretty, pretty full. They're at higher numbers, anywhere from 16 to 26, right? And most of them are in the 20s. So, there was enough interest generated in all of our buildings to run a section. But you initially look at that, the initial interest in worries as you start to formulate your sections.
And then do you have some families that can't be accommodated at their homeschool and then go elsewhere? What kind of numbers are we looking at there?
Yeah. And just looking at our buildings that were full, that were at capacity, we had two students, and talking with the principals, that decided to take a program in another building. So, really what, what she's asking here is, if I'm correct, is if the program's full, and there is somebody that comes out of homeschool and still wants to be in the program, when we say full, we kept the program at 26, could I go into another building that has space? And we do offer that. You have to transport your child on your own. And we have two people that came to their building that was full, and they really want this opportunity for the child, so they attended the program.
And then my next question is, do we have a sense of what numbers or percentages of our first graders are going to kindergarten elsewhere, and whether that's because they don't like the options that we're offering?
Yeah. To really dive down, get a number on that, we would have to talk to each of our buildings individually, and really look, take an inventory of our first-grade students that are new, and one determine where they had a new move here, so they were not in District 200 boundaries in kindergarten, or were they at an outside program? And if so, what was the reason why? So, do we have a sense of that at the local level? I would say as a building principal, I always had a sense of that, of where my people were. From a district perspective, we have looked at that globally or systematically.
Any other questions up to the slide?
Rob, I would finish my answer. I'd also try and stay so. So, if I count All Day Kindergarten as two sessions of kindergarten compared to a half-day of two sessions, while the enrollment is going, the total enrollment is going down, the number of sessions is actually increasing just a little bit. Does that sound right to you? Does that make sense?
Say it again.
So, okay, so, we have, for All Day Kindergarten, you count as two sessions, so teachers working on both sessions. So, you're filling a classroom. Am I thinking about that the right way?
All Day Kindergarten is one session.
Sorry, you're filling the full day.
You are.
Maybe you're half-day, but you're filling the half-day, right?
You are.
So.
No, right, just give me a second. I know where you're going.
But the point is, is that we're teaching actually more session, half-day sessions, if you count a full day as two sessions.
Correct.
That's the point.
Yes, that is correct.
If you look at the raw numbers, it looks like enrollment's coming down, but it's really not. If you look at the just purely numbers of kids taking kindergarten, it looks like it's coming down. It was technically not. That's fair, right, okay. Because if you multiply that by the cost, whatever the assumption is for free and reduced, you know, it looked like if you take the cost, it's actually, we're actually collecting less money, we're actually not. I think that was one of the points. We're obviously only obligated to provide half-day kindergarten, okay? And I guess in summarization of this, we're saying there's not enough evidence to say that we should try to find the money to have full day that would justify the offering of new full-day kindergarten. I guess that's the board issue, or the seat.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be the threshold decision. So, Chris, you and Faith again ran some kind of preliminary numbers on the cost that would be associated with moving to a full day. You want to share?
Yeah. Just, so these are very, very rough numbers that Faith and I just kind of looked at here. So, just considering some of the additional cost, you're looking close to a million, possibly, to run a, to run a full day without the cost. Here's the considerations in adding extra FTE because of Mr. Hammond's point, because really, you're only getting one teacher for the two. So, you have to look at the enrollment. This is just based upon this year. Cost of aids for students. You are also, then also adding additional art and music sections. So, there's some of those cost considerations. You do get some cost savings on the transportation and day back in there, so that's some of the considerations. But it does come with a cost if you take the tuition, tuition out of there. One of the things we haven't done is look at that $4,000 payment and to back that up and see is that a different piece that you look at differently? Because that has been standard payment since 2011, 12. It would come with a cost, yes.
But we're saying that educationally, we're not gaining enough to justify that additional cost, I guess, is the other side of that. You know, I guess I'm going to ask Brad's question, is what's our peer group doing?
Yeah, I got it. So, so first, I'll, we can give you both. So, I think, first of all, educationally, do we see a benefit for our students? Yes. Do we see a benefit for our students that are at risk more so? Yes. We see an increase in achievement there. Even if we look at the kind of a three-year trend, we definitely see an increase in achievement for our students that either come with readiness factors, come from homes of poverty, or are second language students. We see an increase, a slight increase in achievement for our students pre to end of the year for our students that come with readiness skills, but not significant. So, really, our work in our district kind of mirrors with the literature sense. So, that's a good thing, and we're capturing a lot of those students. So, there's a benefit there, and we have people taking advantage of it. Some people still use the half-day. Our benchmark districts are kind of, we're right in the middle of what they kind of do. So, 203 and 204 both offer full day for their same consistent as a half-day. Every school district has to offer a half-day program, all right? So, they have a few students that just come for half of the day, and then they leave, but they're full day. 203, 204, that's only a couple students out of over 1,000. Barrington 220, one of our other districts, they offer a half-day program, and then they're tuition-based, what they call enrichment. And they have four kind of options there. They have like Chinese, you can take a language piece, or you can just take an extended day, have pay, but it's tuition-based. Elmer's will strictly half-day. I know they just passed a rough round, and I think some of the funds are, there's talks about it going towards that. I don't want to comment on that, but.
I don't want to.
Okay. So, and St. Charles is tuition-based. We're kind of right.
So, so Elmer's, correct, they just passed a rough round, which includes moving towards their ability to offer All Day Kindergarten. They did a survey, Elmer's did a survey of all of our benchmark districts, plus other K-312 unit districts, so Plainfield, Geneva, Tavia, but did a broader survey about the cost, the charge for All Day Kindergarten versus the participation rate. So, as it relates to the cost, it goes from zero to 4,000. We are the most expensive of the peers, but the more you reduce costs, Naperville 203 offers it for free. They have like 9.5% participation rate. The problem is the space, right? So, it's a supply and demand. If you reduce your cost, you're going to increase demand, and there are going to create a space issue. And we went through this whole thing. We've accomplished this without adding All Day Kindergarten space onto our schools, which is what Elmer's is in a position to be doing now. So, there's an economics, and then there's a facility component. So, that's kind of what I'm, because we don't have to go into a survey. All that is available. Elmer's did it about a year ago.
Which was my question, do we even have the space? Do we have the space in all of our buildings to run this?
Yeah. And Faith and I both looked at that. It would be a tight, a tight fit. Like, if you were to run it this year, we'd need seven additional classroom spaces. I think you could find those. You would have to consolidate where you're providing some of your intervention services. So, would be, it would be doable, but I would definitely think it would be a tight fit for some of our buildings. So, you would have to restructure and make some changes. So, and I think you would just be a little tighter on your facility end each year if you're working with this year's numbers. So, it would be a consideration that would be tight.
I think we should keep this on the, you know, on the radar as we move forward in case some issues change. And I think that what I'm hearing is that the students most at risk are, you know, there's an economic benefit for them, and it's not as expensive to achieve this. So, you know, I think we're on the right pattern, and you know, we have some other financial issues that make it difficult to do it, as noted by the board six years ago, seven years ago, that they made that decision. So, I think we need to be consistent, but I do think we need to keep watching that peer group and the performance data. That's kind of why I asked this question, the first question.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Schaller.
All right, I'm ready to talk about this.
The next overall report is for Faith.
Yeah. So, I'm for those reading, kind of to grab what this might mean. And you'll see this at many of our elementary schools, in math coaches' offices. And what this stands for is a new initiative that we have launched with Elementary Math. And you may know that there's a growing body of research that talks about how the way that we've traditionally taught math has caused some math anxiety and math phobia, especially when you think about time tests and, let's do this. Some students learn very well from that, other people develop a kind of a dislike for math. So, the math coaches and I have been looking at what other countries do, and also looking at different ways to teach math fact fluency. And this is what we have, math fact fluency without anxiety. It's what we're doing at all of our schools. We put out a video, talked about that, and then the math coaches and I have developed games and activities that we're emailing out to the elementary teachers every other Friday. And then they've now got new ideas and ways to talk about math fact fluency. And just when I talk about math fact fluency, I'm talking not only about the speed of facts, but also can you figure out the most efficient way to do a math problem? Can you think about different patterns? So, there are a lot of games and activities, not just time tests, that will make our students better mathematicians. And I wanted you to know about it, so that when you see this out in the schools, you'll now know what this means. That's my learning update. I think I'm going to be doing this at every one.
Are there any questions or comments for Faith?
I'll.
Here again, move to our third overall report, which is on social emotional learning.
Come back.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Just like with student learning, actually excited that I've been asked to give a social emotional learning update at any of our board meetings, just to give an opportunity to highlight some of the good work that we've done in our schools. And to be honest, this is a pretty simple task, because I think you could find a lot of social emotional learning successes in our buildings every day. So, as I choose to highlight each one, just know that there's a lot of opportunities, and I will work to highlight different ones at different levels each time. The first one comes from Madison Elementary School. There's a write-up in there. I actually got an opportunity to attend their ceremony that is kind of their capstone for social emotional learning. They have what they call guidelines for success. And most all of our buildings have guidelines for success. And really, what these are, are clear expectations for behavior and clear expectations for how you can be successful in the classroom and in the school setting. The reason why this is important is because when we know it's expected of us, we're more successful in our academics and in our daily lives and in our functions. Not only do they teach these guidelines directly, which is a key component to any social emotional learning framework, it's almost the foundation of it. The higher level piece of that is how do you recognize the achievement of these guidelines for success? And not only do they do that in the classroom, but every trimester, they select a student from each classroom that is demonstrating high achievement towards either being respectful, being responsible, being ready to learn. They invite the student's parents to their school secretly, without that student knowing. And they have a whole school assembly led by Mr. Callahan, who is really taking a lead in this. So, you have a principal leading the social emotional programming within the building, and their leadership team is up front. They recognize the student, they read a little excerpt about his outstanding character. All 500 students in the building are cheering for the student, and the parents are in the back of the gym. And I was saying with the parents, I'm thinking, my kid's going to start kindergarten next year. This would be the highlight of my days. Not only is it capitalizing on a really positive community engagement effort to get our kids in, or to get our parents in, but it's also reinforcing the character and the behaviors that we want out of our kids. So, it's really, really hard to capture, just as I articulated to, but this type of stuff is happening in all of our buildings. I had an opportunity to attend the ceremony on Monday at Madison, and it was, it was great. And just wanted to recognize Madison School for that.
So, just a kind of a clarification on these last two items. We had our inaugural, inaugural meeting, SCL meeting, a few weeks ago. And one of the things Chris and I and the team talked about was trying to highlight some learning things. At the end of each meeting, just kind of quick hits, you know, we spent so much time talking about facilities and finance over the past several years. It'd be nice to get a little bit more balance and talk about kids and student experiences, and just kind of highlight these things somewhere in the meeting, just to remind us why we're all sitting here. So, thank you for bringing that to this agenda.
The next item on our, the discussion.
The next item on our discussion, turning to the early learning center, next steps about the future.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. So back to facilities, as we're talking about it. We actually are extremely excited, I think, to talk with the board through, I think, kind of our timeline in terms of next steps in light of the referendum vote. So what Bill's going to walk the board through this evening is actually some work that we've done really literally just in the last week with our consultant, with our construction management and architect team, as we kind of now look at where we go. And let me just say, ready on set. So the emotional reaction to referendum passing is to say, "All right, let's step on the accelerator and get going on this as quickly as we possibly can." I get that, understand that, based on the time that we have invested in moving this project, that is, that's a natural response to it. We want to be very thoughtful, though, in terms of how we approach this and what we do. And so what we're going to lay out for you are really two different schedule options that we consider, but then kind of guide you toward the option that we think makes the most sense, both for the board and for the committee, kind of putting everything on balance. So I'm going to turn it over to Bill, who's going to kind of walk you through the two timelines, probably start first with, with I guess what we would call our kind of accelerated start, but, you know, we'll kind of teaser where this is going to go. That's not the recommended option that we're going to move you through, and we're going to kind of take you to what I think we're actually recommending. So Bill?
Thank you, Dr. Schiller, and I think the board has copies of both of these schedules in your green folder, and we're going to start with the expedited one. Again, as Dr. Schiller mentioned, we did work with our partners, our construction manager firm and architectural firm, to look through the schedule options that we have for the early learning center. Obviously, the timeframe, from what our original intent was, to build the building changed, due to going to a referendum, and the timeframe originally set up was a thoughtful one that took into consideration multiple factors that you have to consider when doing construction scheduling, most notably winter. Obviously, I think we went from fall to winter pretty quick here, so the winter conditions, as it were, can have a profound impact on the timing of how this project will lay out. So as we look at the expedited schedule, you'll love that we had a referendum that passed on November 6th. We have a 21-day canvas period that we have to wait for the H County Board of Elections to go through their, the 21 days. So beyond that, then we can start seriously delving into awarding construction contracts. I think it's worth noting that appreciative of our construction contracts that we bid out, our contractors bid on these back in August. We're ready to go to the board, obviously, August 15th, to award these contracts, and without almost exception, all of them were willing to wait, wait until we got through the referendum to find out what would happen, and we, and they're, have been willing to hold their prices. We do have a few contractors that, we didn't talk to them now, that where we're at, when our timeline is to approve the contracts with some additional costs. Those additional costs are up to about $14,861, or $11.9 million for the construction contracts. So I would say we are very fortunate in the fact that the contractors held their bids so long and were willing to, you know, when they went so bad tall, to find out what additional costs may be associated with this project related to that. They almost all held their price, and if there was some mechanical and some steel that did go up there or constitute that increase, and steel is with the tariffs and things going on, we're hearing that's going to start going up considerably, so we're very fortunate in that regard. So appreciative of those prime contractors that held their price. I know Nicholas worked very hard with them to do that, and have little come back to us in that regard. Going back to the expedited schedule, we would anticipate, whether it's expedited or not, we're going to come back to the board and looking at maybe November 28th, the board meeting to award the construction contracts. We're still working with Erica, and we may do some type of groundbreaking. Obviously, it's not August, it's January, so we'll get creative with groundbreaking. All of that would be the same, whether it's expedited or not. When you get into the expedited issue, there's two key issues relative to the work that would start. We can do the wellfields related to the geothermal, that can start right away without much cost, but when we get into the actual building pad, the foundation of the project, foundational work, as well as the movement of dirt on the site, that's where we see what would be some considerable cost increases, probably somewhere in the range of $740,000. We would have to bring aggregate stone in in order to do the concrete base, and then the other thing is movement of dirt on the site. We are trying, our plan is to balance the site with dirt so we don't have to haul dirt off the site and spoils. That can get very costly because of winter conditions, we would not be able to do that. So we're looking at a considerable cost increase on this expedited schedule if we wanted to start building the building pad and moving dirt around on the site. So the estimates that we had gotten from, through our construction manager with our site excavating, would say it costs somewhere in the ballpark of $740,000 to get going on that site. We'll talk a little bit more with the non-expedited schedule, how that would work, or why we believe that's a better option. We look at, as we go through this, if we were to start with all of that work, we would probably be looking at substantial completion of the building in December of 2019, with the opportunity to occupy the building in January. We would have to phase this project out differently, because again, we're now back into winter conditions and a lot of work around the site, including the demo of the building, a lot of the site work, and our team work would have to wait because asphalt plants are not open in the winter. They close up, they're probably closing out, closing November when it gets cold, and that would, so we would have to, we'd still be looking at a substantial completion of the whole site, probably August of '20. It does afford us the option to move into the building early, but again, a lot of the concrete site work around there would be delayed, and it would be a tricky process to get all of that work completed in that timeframe. Any questions on the expedited schedule, again, the cost increase that we're looking at, and I probably can't get too much into detail, I'm sure Mr. Paul's understanding of the need for the bill, how the building pad would work with aggregate as well as the haul off and site balancing, but any questions on that expedited?
So that number, $740,000, I know we got a question earlier, Paul, that number is just the earthwork?
Yes.
Or does that include the additional cost of having to pour concrete in the winter, which has its own embedded, is that a combined cost?
Yeah, it's, 22 tons of aggregate is about $484,000, and soil haul off is another $250,000. Winter work, winter concrete blanking related to the concrete foundations, another $5,000. So it adds up pretty quick.
Just so everyone understands it, when you're pouring concrete in cold freezing weather, you have to keep the concrete warm, because you don't want it to freeze. That's part of the additional cost. That's the big difference of starting in August versus starting in January.
Correct.
I have a question on that. We've identified, had we not passed the referendum, that we would have had something like $6 million of fixes needed at Jefferson, existing building.
Yes, our capital plan is identified.
Right, and of that, are we capable of avoiding those costs and the safety and everything else factor by delaying this process? And are we going to incur some cost to, you know, to make sure we have a safe, sound building?
Yeah, we continue to maintain Jefferson and barring some type of major mechanical failure would probably be the biggest threat with JR, but we do have a separate jockey boiler there that, so if the main boiler were to fail, we do have the ability to still heat the building, so barring some type of unknown thing that came, comes up in the building, we, you know, we obviously continue to maintain it, but we would, yes, we would avoid that cost of well over $5 million of those capital items that are related to the building.
Yeah, I'm more concerned, again, you know, let's say we're now a year out or further than we originally were, you know, there's this unknown factor, but I'm concerned that, you know, again, I'm not familiar enough with the property to say, you know, we know that the heating system's going to break down, and that's going to cost us to maintain it or fix it, you know, $200,000, something like that. Is there any concern that one-year delay, I'll call it, that we might incur a significant amount of cost like that?
No, I don't think so. Again, we don't have an air conditioning system in the building other than the window units, and obviously the replaced zones. The biggest concern, I think, would be somewhere in the area of heating the building, and because we do have that jockey boiler there, I think we're safe to get through here. Again, if the main boiler, which is the original boiler, were to fail, I think we could still heat that building properly.
Okay, so whatever else was on that $6 million list, both of them break during the week.
Doors, windows, flooring, there's, you know, they're added to that building.
There's a date problem here, unless I've misread it, the groundbreaking, I assume that's January 17th, 2019?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay, good, because the math wasn't working for me. That's okay. And on the, maybe I just can't see it, but on the project schedule, not the expedited, or vice versa, I guess, or what's the date for occupying the building? It looks very clear in the expedited, it's January 6th, 2020. Where is it on the?
August 21st, '20.
Okay, good, thank you.
And again, that, as you mentioned, that schedule, what we would do in this schedule to avoid that $700-plus thousand cost with winter conditions, we would start, we would still be able to do the wells for the geothermal, we could start that in January, and then we would start actually looking at the building pad in April of 2019 to start building the pad out, and we would avoid all of those costs, and they get, the difference would be just the time of occupancy. Either way, we're doing work into the fall of 2020 under either schedule, just because of the way it works with the winter conditions, and there is, would be some additional cost because the schedule has been extended with our construction manager, because we're extending the time, turns out to about 20 months. That would be about a little over $100,000 additional cost with CM work, because they've got supervised work on the site, so the general conditions would increase because we've extended the schedule, and that would be the case either way.
Well, I think we're in a kind of a catbird seat, right? Because we've got the building already there, there's no, you know, we can do the migration once the other buildings are prepared, and do that logical process while we all want to get it done as quickly as we can. I think that's why we should, to your point, and any cost avoidance makes sense to me, even if it delays the occupancy, because we do have the luxury of a building still there, to Jim's point, that's functional and serviceable and maintainable at this point.
So are costs of materials guaranteed? Because I can see those going up, so they are guaranteed.
Yeah, your, yep, your bid, the cost to construct the building is going to, is guaranteed. You've got a $14,000 upcharge from the original bid. So again, that is kudos and a lot of appreciation to the contractors that have extended or kept their bids beyond the window where they were required to. So let's, again, let's just be crystal clear, that was by their choice and willingness to do it, we appreciate it, but you've got a $14,000 upcharge. And again, I guess I'm going to say in the timing of it, so I believe, and I'm guessing that Brad would say from a construction standpoint, that if you did start the building pad construction, if you were to be willing to absorb the cost, I think it's reasonable that the building can be done by December, but there's no guarantee. So you would be extending almost three-quarters of a million dollars, and I still think, right, it's potentially a little tight on that. You know, there, again, could be done, there's a lot to logistic of transitioning a building literally in the middle of a year, trying to take a two-week window and somehow, you know, transition every classroom, every, you know, every piece over there. So, you know, again, as much as you'd like to expedite it, you know, you're weighing out three-quarters of a million dollars for probably three to four months rental or time on the facility, rather than avoiding that cost, honoring the building cost that we very clearly put in your referendum communications, because if we do incur that cost, you're not, you're not no longer delivering a building at $15 million, you're delivering a building at 15.7, five, zero-ish million dollars.
Just to be clear on that, I also heard another number, though, in there, that was the extension of time to the cost to construction management, $100,000.
Correct.
So if I'm hearing myself correct, it does far, are about $117,000 of new costs that we've incurred because of this delay.
Correct.
And that doesn't include any of the information that we had to create or anything like that? Do we have any feel for that number?
We, in terms of, you're talking about mailing costs associated with referendum materials? Yeah, yeah. Every time you do a direct mailer, your cost as a district's about $7,000 to do a direct piece of mail, and that incorporates both the production of the print material along with the mailing costs associated with it. So you expended about $20,000 in actual, like, mail material costs associated with the referendum. There are probably a couple of other miscellaneous costs just around some social media advertising, advertising, with some social media loose opportunities, but you're a little over $20,000 in print costs.
So on the outward, we have expended additional $100,000, between $100,000 and $150,000, extra money that could have been used for some other purpose because of the loss of file by one individual. And that's a pretty good summary on that?
Yeah, you will have something that the board affirms the direction to move forward with Schedule B. So we do have to talk about it, again, I guess tied to that, I want to affirm as well. So why the special meeting on November the 28th? So again, there are a couple of things that we do want to mobilize right away within the project. So even though you're not potentially, you know, starting work on the building pad until April 1st, recognize right at the beginning of January, you are going to see construction fence go up on that property. So the site itself will be mobilized so that we can begin work on the wellfield that's associated with the geothermal. So you are mobilizing the site, even though the building pad itself is going to wait until April. The other piece in working with Bob Lewis and the folks that are working on the lease financing side to that, we would like to get the lease certificates authorized and sold in this calendar year before the holidays. I think that optimizes the best opportunity in terms of rate on the lease certificates, which operate, you know, basically like a municipal bond. And so we'd like to have that meeting on the 28th, so that at that meeting, the board will take three pieces of, actually, two pieces of action. You will approve a new lease agreement that will look very similar, almost identical to the lease agreement that was in place before, or you rescinded. So the new lease agreement, you will authorize parameters around the issuance of the lease certificates, so that that can happen, and you will let bids on the project. So you will approve the construction contracts on the 28th. I'd like to get that done on the 28th, so that we can move forward with getting the lease certificates sold before the end of the year, which will, will need to happen, because as soon as we mobilize the site, start working on the wellfields, there will be some cost, obviously, associated with the building that we need to begin paying out.
Are we also certain that the leasing bank, I'll call it, will commit to the same number, because there's an anticipated rate increase, you know, coming in December, January, and they've already committed to the number?
What, the original, under the original plan, I believe we thought we'd take occupancy August of 2019, is that right? So we're talking a full year later, because we don't incur the expedited. I just want to point that, I think that's another thing that we need to just keep our eye on that. There's dollar costs.
There's, there's dollar cost to the actions, but there's also time. It's a full year, it's a big number.
Any other questions or comments, it'll be the Bill and Dr. Schiller?
Question on, is it important for us, the finance committee to meet, uh, to review this lease arrangement again and, and validate it before we bring it to the board, or is that a foregone conclusion?
Yeah, we, we can absolutely do that. I don't think it's gonna really change mechanically in the lease agreement. I mean, it's really the agreement that, uh, that you, uh, have, have reviewed before. I think the one element that, um, uh, that, uh, Bill and I are still working on, looking into, that I think would probably be a good thing to review with the finance committee, would be, um, what we want to sell in lease certificates. So, again, from the previous agreement, when we put the last agreement in place, we were assuming a fifteen and a half million dollar building cost. Um, even though we've seen some uptick, again, please remember with the bids that went out, you are still delivering this project almost a half a million dollars below what was your budget estimate, which, which gives us the ability to, uh, perhaps lower what we anticipated selling in lease certificates. So, we had anticipated a fourteen million dollar lease certificate, uh, sale, you know, given that the, the board had already dedicated a million and a half out of, uh, out of district funds, uh, to the, to the escrow, and that could probably be reduced by half a million dollars now. So, uh, that's a good thing, is to pay less in, in interest costs on that. But, but we probably ought to look at that number now with the, the timing of all of this, just to make sure that board is comfortable with that.
Just to be clear, we're not occurring an interest cost, we're occurring a lease payment core has the bank, well, they think about interest, we don't. But, I, I think we need to stay in that million dollar number, we were, you know, projecting the entire time, you know, not to exceed, we can do it a little better, that's fine. Uh, but we still have, I don't know, sixty million, fifty million more of other capital improvements we need to deal with, so, uh, you know, I, I don't have any problem with that and keeping some dollars available with, again, preventing other tax increases that may otherwise come on. No, that really, really, you know, if you think you need us to be, to do that, that's fine. If you, if I can become available, I assume you can. And Jim, I appreciate your comment, but this is not an interest bank, it's a, a bank, uh, bank issue.
All right, so, I'm gonna throw my point at the schedule. Um, I agree, agree expedited schedule, pay seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, it's not a struggle for me, that's a lot of money that could be spent somewhere else. Uh, so if I turn to the other schedule and I contemplate breaking ground, this says April, mid-March, whatever the timeframe is, for the, for the build, the foundations of the building pad, I do believe that if, that we can get in this building the holidays of twenty nineteen to January of twenty twenty. Um, as I look at this building, uh, very simple building, it's out of the footprint, single story, um, I believe you can build this building in nine plus months. Uh, we have the advantage, if we break ground, March, April timeframe, uh, of twenty nineteen, we have the advantage of three months of the architect reviewing shop drawings and some models for equipment, um, getting that all in ahead of time, not have to worry about any delays of delivery to, of equipment to the site. Um, I think there's a benefit there in terms of the efficiency of construction. You know, I think, I, I wanna challenge our professionals, Bill, back, and, and I think we can get in, in January sixth of twenty twenty. Now, I understand the complexity of moving mid-year. You know, we're talking about transitioning into a building in the last half of December, which is not ideal. Um, I don't know if we have the opportunity just for that individual early childhood program to adjust the schedule for an extra week. Uh, do we do something just different for that one year in December of twenty nineteen, January of twenty twenty? Maybe it's a three-week break for the early childhood program. I know there's complexities of that. Um, I believe it's still, and I'm not, I'm not willing to accept a full year delay till August of twenty twenty. Um, the, the challenge with that is that if we're, if we were able to do that and get in the building in January of twenty twenty, you can demolish the, we can demolish the building, but you can't do the site work in January. So, you probably wouldn't be able to do that until April of twenty twenty. So, that building is gonna live, um, in, in, in my, in my philosophy, live for three months with the old apartment, no playground. Can they deal with that for three months? It's a challenge, but I think they could probably work around it, they worked around situations for thirty years, I think we can handle another couple of months. So, uh, I, I agree, having a special meeting on, uh, November twenty eighth to, to start the process. I don't want to incur the additional cost of building, building the, the site work through the, through the wear months and have to worry about keeping concrete on. But I do believe with very well thought out construction schedule and the ability to get equipment kind of pre-approved early and on order, so that it rises, it's like just in time with a good set of contractors, we can do it. So, that's my opinion. Um, I've been doing this for twenty years, I wanna go back to the team and challenge them and see if it's possible. Recogni- recognizing that there's still that challenge, we have operationally, how do we shift school in the middle of the year?
What are you saying, I have a question, you're saying that you'll be revised, and hopefully already, you'll be contractors, you believe we can get in, I expect?
I, I believe if we started the process now, broke ground in March, roughly March, March, April, um, I believe we can get the building constructed in nine plus months so that we can occupy the building in January of twenty twenty.
Versus the?
Versus August of twenty twenty. Now, there's challenges. The biggest one is us, our teacher, having to get all the equipment out and, and managing the move and kids, the kids are gonna be fine, they go into a new building in January, it's like the kids are gonna be the problem, it's gonna be us that try to manage through that. But I would rather get the kids in the building as fast as possible.
So, just, just for clarity and I, you know, should we just sort of go back and review this? Uh, our recommendation around this schedule has nothing to do with our unwillingness to make a mid-year transition, because we presented the schedule to the board that would have done that. So, um, just, I, I wanna be careful with that comment, that we're not planting a seed that we're suggesting this just because we don't wanna deal with the logistics of a mid-year transition. Um, this was based on the recommendation of the, the professionals, consultants that obviously you've hired to do the project, but we can go back and revisit. Not gonna change the fact that, I think what I'm hearing from the board is, uh, the April first, or right around April first, starting around pouring, the foundation is the preferred option to avoid the three quarters of a million dollar cost.
I would like, Nicholas, to go back and work out a detailed construction schedule. I mean, I know that there's a lot of meat behind this, but this is not a construction schedule. It's, it's just, it's not like a construction, yeah, and probably nobody else would wanna see that. But anyway, that's my thoughts, I wanna challenge the team to see if there's a way to do it. Avoid the cost of break ground in the spring, get, get in the building and, and occupy the building in January twenty twenty.
Bill, when we built Pleasant Hill, we moved in during the year.
I think that was right before I got there, but I think they moved spring break.
They carried the truck.
They moved spring.
Yes, we have moved in during the year.
Yeah, that's, that's the one school we, but, again, I wasn't here, but March, it was spring break for you to make the move over.
There's nothing that we would do differently in the short term to expedite, you're talking about other than meet with the, uh, consultants, et cetera. So, we can proceed under the ethic described without any other, any other problems, we'll get, you've got it out, and then you guys take over and build the building.
I believe the value of this is giving, like an architect, a substantial amount of time to make sure it's getting to the nitty-gritty of, you know, starting construction, approving all the small shop drawings and some of those that they have to agree upon review for mechanical equipment and steel, infrastructure, brick materials, finished surfaces. How do you do that for three months if you call, if I'm on, if you're still back there? I think there's a lot of value in that, and all done ahead of time, and coordinating the delivery of that material and equipment to the site just in time.
I, going back to what I said earlier about, I'm a little concerned about things breaking down with another seven-month factor there. That's one of the underlying unknowns to me, and if we can expedite that timeframe, that's, that's, that avoids that concern. You know, I, I just think that all the systems that are fragile and, you know, anything we do to expedite would be great.
And so, I'm thinking slightly play with that. Now, there is a possible reality of the construction contractors having to work double shifts for part of the year, there is a cost for doing that. I don't know what that cost is. Uh, I don't think it's gonna be anywhere near seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, but, um, that's just my request, I, I wanna go back and get a little bit deeper.
And we did target, always, we looked at April first, I mean, it really depends on the spring, we may be able to get in, in March, but we may not be able to start digging in April, I, early April, I, depending on what, what type of spring we do, wanna make sure that we're, uh, you know, as we talked about that, and, and again, if to expedite the schedule, there is, could be costs of your double shift and things like that, that's a great point.
All right, any other comments or questions?
I, given the date as a potential placeholder on that, we have a schedule that we will officially do that. That is a CAC night, so, uh, we, we would, in that, Citizens Advisory Committee for this month in lieu of getting this project geared up, I, I think that will, will understand, so.
Wouldn't that be our next normal meeting? I can be down, hold on, yeah, we'll see. I'm good, so Mike out. Thank you, Bill. Next out, I'm gonna send our, send our reports, we're all receiving, most of them, financial reports, lawyer requests, um, reports on board members, board meeting notes, or tests, and additional information from the committees with respect to, their respective minutes.
I have a, I have a report, but I just wanted to do a, a quick check-in to before a couple of things about one of my adopted schools, which is the Transition Center. Um, we were all invited to the Options Fair, uh, it took place at Reginald South, I attended it October, um, I had a chance to go over there. It was a fascinating, um, event. It was, I talked to Sue Waters, and while I was there, um, this is the third year or something like this has gone on, our first time hosting it, and it's a collaboration with thirteen different school districts, um, basically bringing in resources concerning post-secondary planning for students with disabilities of the entire range, of just kids who need, um, uh, support academically in school. So, they had close to a hundred vendors there with everything from, um, helping students figure out which schools, um, are particularly good at, um, supporting students academically once they're there, helping them navigate the application process, um, also a bunch of vendors for students who would have alternative programs, not necessarily a two- or four-year college, but maybe a trade school or a technical school. Um, they had both nonprofit and for higher vendors there, helping, um, these students with a range of services heading into adulthood, whether it's job skills employment, housing, advocacy, um, socialization, um, students that they were anticipating close to seven hundred attendees there, and the place was hopping when I was there, it was really amazing, so I think it's wonderful. First of all, I have just a shout-out to Sue and, and everything she does for us, it's amazing what we're doing with, for our kids who have special needs, especially all the way up through age twenty-two, but that event in particular was amazing. And then the next week, I had a chance to go visit the Transition Center, which I've seen before, but they have done an expansion, I think over the last, last summer, I think, um, expanding their facility in the building that they're in there on Bridge Street or near Bridge Street, um, which they're so excited about, it's a wonderful expansion and, um, and including a, a new accessible entrance on one side of the building for them, but the expansion allows them to have designated space for their vocational program, um, so it's not on top of their room they were using for therapy and for, um, special privacy needs for some of the, the students there. So, just a, a great celebration and collaboration with the community. They have a great, um, relationship with the landlord there, who was very helpful with the design of the new space, kicked in some things at, you know, at, you know, his cost, um, and, and they're constantly coming up with new collaborations with the community for, afterwards for our students. So, great things going on there, I thought you guys would be interested to know.
Thank you, Jim, thank you very much for the report. Any other, more reports? Um, okay, well, then I have one. The, initially at this meeting, we reviewed the audit, uh, it's not available yet, uh, we did, the finance committee did meet with the auditors. The reason there's a delay, it's not in particular our district, but it's basically all school districts. Uh, there's new accounting disclosures associated with what's called post-retirement benefits, mainly the health insurance paid to retirees and the cost associated in, in the buildup to that point in time. But those literally don't affect us when we kind of operate on a day-to-day basis, we, we use the fund balance approach versus government-wide financial statements. And, uh, this year, basically, we had a revenue expenditure of about three and a half, four million dollars more definitely, about three and a half made out. It came primarily because it stayed caught up with our delayed payments that we had not gotten in the prior year. It's kind of a one-time hit, otherwise, everybody was pretty much on target. And, uh, you know, but it did add the fund balance. At the end of the day, we have, we should have around eleven million, give or take, uh, in fund balance carryover to help pay for things that we talked about. Um, we did spend about three and a half million dollars, I think, this year's, I don't know, capital projects?
Uh, we moved a million, in this fiscal year, we moved a million to secure our assets.
Okay, but didn't we spend?
It's possibly two.
Okay, I thought we spent, I was capital projects on this fiscal year that we're reporting on about three and a half million, whatever. Uh, and that's way up, we have budgeted literally a couple of years ago, so, you know, we were, we were budgeting about a million dollars. So, we're, we're making inroads against that, for maintenance costs that we're talking about for years. Uh, we did get some extra money this year because of interest rates going up, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, all in all, we still have the highest recognition level from the state financial evaluation. So, you know, off these considerations, you know, we, we, we always budget balance, we were basically there with the exception of the catch-up on the state, the, the state finally paid us, you know. So, uh, that, that could, you know, cause us to stay in much better shape. Now, you know, we still have, we're discussing in the near term, the operating costs moving forward, vibrant projections, you know, we're entering into it on a pretty good basis going into this year, so. And we don't expect those delays of the state anymore. You know, I think that is discussed a few times, when the state stops funding certain levels and so on. You know, the, the way they changed the formula, the way they distributed, that's part of our monthly payment now, it used to come in four payments, and they were always two payments behind. So, you know, we've caught up with that, so all in all, you know, we're in pretty good shape. So, I fund balanced about thirty-two percent of revenues as compared to our twenty-five percent, uh, objective, I guess, and that's what we spent, eleven million dollars. So, all in all, you know, while we will have people out there show up in the next, probably December, maybe, I don't know, it's some state agency that does these calculations that, again, you know, better than delaying on payments, you know, they're just delaying this measure anymore. So, all in all, that was. Okay, thank you, Jim. Uh, report for President Service, Jim.
In two thousand one, Rosemary Swanson was elected president of the board, the board adopted a formal policy to determine office president in two years. So, Rosemary served two years, and Mark Latour served two years, and I was going to serve two years. Uh, but at the end of my first two-year term, Brad had served, he was vice president at the time because of some professional commitments with his position, that White Company wasn't in a position to take over as president. Um, and so I continued to serve as president. We were gonna make the switch in August, but our friends kind of precluded that switch occurring at that time. Uh, but I will stepping down as president, yet our December board, Brad will become president, and then we'll have an election for vice president and secretary, so I just wanted to make. wanted to make sure, be aware of that and state it publicly. So I'll put that on to Jennifer in December, maybe.
And that's a policy that we have, that if the president steps down, the vice president automatically moves up. So that's what would need to, need to have in a, in a election or a discussion to at least replace the vice president, maybe also the secretary.
Any questions on that?
Thank you for extending the time and helping us go on referendums.
I have to say, Jim, the, my personal experience has been very rewarding in your direction. It's very, you know, I thought we had a very much calm environment in our, you know, our daily events and our board meetings, and I truly appreciate that. I think we were getting distracted at times about other things, you know, you've done a great job, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next item is topics for future discussions, we have fiscal audit, people here, EK audit, five-year financial projections, and then announced on December 11, 2018, is our Board of Education Self-Evaluation Workshop with the Illinois Association School Board Executive Session, 6:00 PM at the School Service Center. And then our next official board is December 12, 2017, at Franklin School. And do we have any public comments? No public comments?
May I ask a question on that self-evaluation? Is it a 6:00 PM start? Because I had, yeah, it's a different time, I had it earlier.
The light dimmed. The meeting starts in 30 seconds.
We're now moving on to closed session, therefore I ask for a motion in a second to adjourn the closed session for the purpose of discussing security procedures, school building, security and use of personnel, response to natural, friend there with a recently potential danger to safety of employees, staff, and public property pursuant to 5 I L C S 120 CS 2, subpar, that seems, subpar, or eight. Student discipline cases pursuant to 5 I L C S 120 CS 2, subpar, that seems, subpar, or nine. But I have such a motion in a second. Moved by Mr. Handler.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Erickson. This is such a, with a small role. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes, we are now moving to a closed session.